Yeah. Um, yeah, so let's see the themes for trusting work session very well team will start off with uh the off highway vehicle discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. It's good to be back. It's been awhile. Um, I'm gonna talk to you guys tonight about off-highway vehicles. This was a discussion point that got up, uh brought up last fall by a couple of trustees, just some interest in what it would look like. In second, I'm gonna promote trustee daily real quick. I'm kinda doing both things. Okay, perfect. She should be able to get on. Um. So as a discussion point from a couple trustees, conversation about golf carts specifically, we have a, a pretty small town, so the thought of golf carts on our, our roadways is just a discussion point that the board was. Interested in um exploring further. So um this is my initial research I put together uh for this discussion, of course, depending on how this discussion goes, I'm happy to go into more. Um, research, more detail about specific topic points, but um this is really just a chance for us to, to have a starting point. I've spoken with L C S O specifically Sergeant Cherry about some concerns. Um, just things to consider if we are to move forward with something like this. Um, and I would add more partners into that conversation if this is something we want to explore further. Um, I also talked with our engineering department since they maintain our, our roads and um. They have given us some feedback as well. So you see all that information reflected in the memo tonight. Um, there are about four different items I want to specifically talk about, and then I'll open it up for questions and discussion among um the board. So first and foremost. Uh, the general concept is that Governor Polis in twenty twenty-one um eliminated the legalization of golf carts on any state highways, roads. All of that, um basically putting the, the power in the hands of the local jurisdictions to determine the um rules and regulations of their roadways. So. Uh, any state highway that you find in the state of Colorado would have to have a special exemption in order for a golf cart or an off-highway vehicle to um operate on that. Uh, surface. It is important also to note, noted, note that off-highway vehicles and golf carts are different things. So um if we were to pursue something, uh we'd need to specifically outline the difference in vehicle type. Uh. But the general concept is that certain jurisdictions have legalized these uh operation of these vehicles on their roads and some have chosen not to. It depends every, every community is different. So. Tonight, there are a couple of things I would love, love to discuss about it. Um, first and foremost is the registration process. So in terms of off-highway vehicles. They have a registration process through Colorado Parks and Wildlife. That is a database that Laramo County Sheriff's Office could have access to, not specifically, but they could reach out for access. Um. There would be some logistic issues if they were to pull over an off-highway vehicle. Uh Sergeant Cherry wouldn't be able to just like pull up the database to determine registration. He would have to send in an inquiry to the state in order to receive the registration from them. Um. But if there's an, if there is a desire for golf cart specifically, um there's not a set registration process in place. So that would be something that would need to fall within the town. That would look like us collecting um the, the title paperwork that they receive when they, they purchased the vehicle. Um, insurance, uh when we spoke with L C S O, it was really important to them that there be insurance in this registration process. Obviously, if there's an accident, we wanna make sure that people are insured. Um, so that would fall within the jurisdiction of the town. It would be something that the town would need to take on um and specifically have. Constant contact with our law enforcement office if there was a case in which the, uh, a vehicle got pulled over. Um. Additionally, another uh thing to consider is signage enforcement. Um, if you look at page twelve in your packet, there is a map of. Ownership of our roads in the town of Wellington. Our roads are owned by the town of Wellington. They're owned by the county. They're owned by the state, and a lot of times they transition that maintenance and ownership. In a very random spot in the road. There's not like a, an intersection or something that can really be defined. So um one of our biggest concerns that we discussed. Um specifically was the, the concept of signage and. Where, where to allow the, the carts to operate and where not to if the road transitions halfway down the street. Um. We obviously don't want people U-turning on a public, a really busy public road that could cause um significant traffic issues, safety issues. Um, our roads aren't quite frankly designed for that. Our roads are, are designed under an engineering standard that is specific to. Cars and trucks and semi-trucks. Um, they're not operating or they're not designed for golf carts specifically. So that's something we need to consider and sign it specifically would have to be pretty outlined. Um, for example, if we were looking at like County Road Nine, that's obviously owned by. Um, the county eventually that may fall in the jurisdiction of the town at certain places. But there would have to be really specific signage of when that would transition jurisdiction because we cannot legalize the operation of the vehicle in county jurisdictions. Um. Additionally, there's just concern, um, something we need to consider is just the reduced speeds of these vehicles. Um, we have a lot of thoroughways, a lot of really. Busy streets that run through. Um, I specifically am thinking about um like Third Street, Sixth Street, um County Road Nine, Highway One. A lot of those roads have pretty fast traffic and um any operation of these types of vehicles would definitely inhibit the ability for traffic to flow as it's in, intended. Um, so there are just, there need to be a conversation about um maybe time of day or um even. Just not allowing them on those roads specifically, maybe just localized smaller um roadways. Specifically, um, I, I, something that was brought up by trustee teeths that I really wanted to highlight is um while. These vehicles are not allowed to operate on state highways. There are instances in the state of Colorado in which. The Colorado Department of Transportation has allowed an exemption in that effect. So specifically the Alpine scenic highway in Hinsdale County has a, um, they're in their third year of a pilot program. In which they are allowing those types of off-highway vehicles on their roadways. Um. The scenic highway is pretty in the mountains. Uh, there's a lot of that type of traffic up there, so it made sense for um the Department of Transportation to allow that pilot program. If that is something that the board would like to consider to allow the operation of the vehicles on, let's say, Highway One, that would be something that the town would have to put together a presentation. And go through that, that commission process, present to the commission and get granted a pilot program of that effect. That's um. A process that the town, town staff would have to take in order for that to happen. There are also other options in terms of allowing these vehicles at certain times. So for example, special events. I know a lot like some of our commissions and our um volunteers have used golf carts during special events like Fourth of July. Um, the town of Parker, if you look in your packet, there's um an example of their. Um, application for an exemption permit for the day of the event. It basically allows the operation of those vehicles on designated roadways. For the event specifically, and that just um provides additional regulation in terms of safety and compliance and um. In that effect. So those are the, the main points I wanted to just bring up to start the conversation, but I'm happy to take requests and discussion and questions.
I know you have for ATVs, UTVs, golf carts. Can we just limit it to like UTVs?
You can, you can restrict it to specific vehicles. Um. It really is up to the board how, how, how specific you wanna get into it or how, how broad you wanna make that discussion.
Yeah. I know I've been over to Bernal, Utah, and a few of those places that I think. Just mainly UTVs are allowed. Is that right? Or?
Like side-by-sides?
Yeah, I think golf carts I've seen in prison around there too. Yep.
But, um. I mean, we're looking at a pretty large undertaking to be able to do something like this through the town, cost-wise. Um, how much is signage per se, like ballpark?
Twenty thousand dollars to start.
I'd say, yeah, that's, that feels pretty fair. I mean, the site, we can make a lot of the signage in-house. Um. We have done that in the past, but I would say that it would be a significant undertaking. I think primarily. The biggest cost in something like this would be staff time, not just. The initial legalization process or the, the ability. It's the keeping the registration and maintaining the, the records at a constant basis. That would have to be a designated. Job duty for someone in the town.
Have we adopted the model traffic code?
Yes.
So what, how, what would those impacts be on something like this?
All of these vehicles would fall under the model traffic code. So like.
Would that mean they need blinkers and seatbelts and headlights and?
Yep.
Late, so it's not just being able to pull something out on the street and?
There are standards within the off-highway vehicles specifically under the state regulations, and then additionally, like Lyons has legalized golf carts specifically in their jurisdiction. They have additional, like, very similar. Uh, regulations for those specifically since they're not outlined in the state legislation.
So out of curiosity, like, how many of these communities that have adopted these types of things have large open spaces or recreation opportunities tied to? These types of trails?
I would say my ballpark estimation is eighty to ninety percent of them would have a, an ATV tourism attraction or that type of off-roading. Um. Atmosphere that they, they receive tourism and um. General populations because of that specifically in their, in their area.
So where is the closest like park or open space where somebody can use a recreation vehicle like that? So if we wanted to connect the trail so that it would make sense, so that it modeled other communities that have made something like this work. What kind of extensive trail system would we be looking at?
That is a great question. I do not have an answer for tonight. Um, I definitely can look into the closest.
It's definitely not red map nerd. So it would be red feather probably.
It's probably red feather. The coast probably, I don't know, seven miles, somewhere right around there.
That sounds, yeah, that sounds all right.
Which is forty-five minutes away.
So in these types of communities, are intended to be connections to open space where they can recreate for tourism?
Yes.
More of the golf carts are, if there's a golf, golf course, oh, nearby.
Right, like in the, like in, yes, it's all over in Windsor. I've been out there a lot for work, but it is, it is like in, within that neighborhood, you're free to, you know, drive the golf cart around. There might be a feeling that, I don't know if there is a golf course or not, but when you get to the end of the neighborhood, there is a sign that says you're not allowed to take your golf cart down here. Um, so that could be an option to follow as well. Um, if you wanted to do something like that, that you have, you don't. And have golf courses. Um, I don't know if there's a desire for people just to drive them around the neighborhood. I know, I know there, there is. We've, I've, I've been with Sergeant Cherry on a ride along months. Stop with the gentleman who had the bike going and off and out in some of the dirt area, but again, can't be driving that on the town roads. So. Right.
So I know as far as education and information I have on this subject, I am completely in support of exploring this further. I think it's an awesome idea. I think it helps people navigate down to our downtown area without creating massive traffic. And parking issues since parking seems to be an issue in our downtown in general. Um, but at the same time, so our ATV that we actually have is fully street legal and licensed with a license plate. Um, so you can get a license. Um, we pay for our tags every year, like we pay for our regular tags for our vehicle. I know that the, when I was looking, I liked a lot of some of the stuff that was introduced in here by some of the other municipalities. Um, the windshield, safety glasses, stuff like that to utilize as far as safety goes. But I know in general that I know more than a handful of people that would love to have something like this available in this area. So whether it's golf courts, golf carts, or side-by-sides motorcycles, I haven't. Heard that much, because even if you have, you still have the age restriction of having to have a driver's license. So you would still have to have a vehicle that complied with all of the rules and regulations of the model traffic code. So that's definitely understandable. Um, I have seen kids scooting around. Many of times on little motorbikes and everything around downtown and probably not being the safest as possible. Um. But so as far as I go, I'm totally open to exploring this more. Um, realizing that this might be something that's explored and discussed through this year and maybe. Implemented as part of a budget item for this following year or the year after. Um, but I can get something that would be awesome for this area in general, and if we do end up expanding further out. That would be awesome if we could include some kind of rec area. I know when Blade Reservoir does come into Parisian, they do have an off-road area planned. In that area, I've seen the recreational part that they have set out, and that's gonna be maybe a ten to fifteen minute jog from here. So that's also something to keep in mind when we move forward with this, because if we can attract tourism here. And people stay at the hotels here. It might not be that bad of a thing.
I question, so I know you mentioned it would help with the parking. I, I don't own an ATV, never an ATV. How would that? Work more? Would we be able to fit more of those into parking? I don't know. I mean, not necessarily, depend on the size. And they're smaller, but would you be able to fit more than one in a parking spot though? Or you could potentially fit two to four parking spaces, depending on, it would be golf carts, probably four. Oh, okay. If it's side-by-side, probably two, depending on the size of the side-by-side. Oh, okay. So, um, so side-by-sides would be one, for sure.
Uh, yeah, definitely depends on the setup.
Okay. Got it.
Trustee Kenny is also raising her hand online.
Yeah, go ahead, trustee daily.
Okay, a couple of things. Um, I remember when we were having our Highway One, uh, Kenny Road Nine conversations, uh, the question came up. Um, from some concerned parents, why don't we just reduce the speed limit? It seems like it would make so much sense, and you know, if the. The fast cars were a concern, we should just lower the speed limit. And then the conversation came back was the reason why speed limit studies are so important. Is that regardless of what the speed limit is, people will drive a certain speed. So therefore, if they were to set a speed limit at a small, uh, the lower speed, it will actually endanger more people. Because some people will abide by the speed limit and go considerably slower. While meanwhile, other people will drive as fast as they're gonna drive, and those slower vehicles will be at a significant risk. So I think the risks that we're talking about, about some vehicles going significantly slower than others. Is an extreme liability, and I think that is us knowing knowingly um putting people at risk. Um. And with that said, I think, I think that that's the liability of the town, us knowing that, that, that's a concern. Um, so for those roadways that have higher speed limits where a lot of these vehicles. Top out, don't even go those speeds, that their top speed. Um, that they could even potentially reach isn't even at that speed limit, uh, which is the majority of these vehicles. Um. That's knowingly putting them in a, in a dangerous situation. So that um. Brings up the scenario where there's several roads within our town limits. That are knowing knowingly dangerous areas. So then we have the situation where. We're limiting which roads can and cannot. Uh, which ones are county, which one are state, which ones are this and that, where we're having to police. Um, potentially with through the signage, through L C S O potentially, um, the use of these vehicles. Um, I don't think we're setting ourselves up for success, to be completely honest. Um, and, and therefore, I don't think that this is. A great choice to move forward with the conditions as they are. So I, I wanted to put that out there first. Secondly, I know that we are potentially, and I hope, I hope going to be undergoing. A significant strategic plan for trails and recreation. I mean, if there is a priority within this board to ensure that, you know, these type of vehicles. Are um accommodated through our new trail system. Um, and that's a priority. Maybe that can be a consideration for our trails plan moving forward. And this would be a great opportunity when we're. On, on the, just starting a potential new strategic plan for trails to include this um within that planning. Um, so therefore, you know, these off-road vehicles would be accommodated for trails, and then, you know. Those plans of connecting trails and maybe potentially up to Soapstone. I think that would be closer personally. I don't know if that allows these type of vehicles. Um. That would be accommodated from a trail system perspective. Uh, there have been some significant risks that have been mentioned and costs, and from a safety. Um, perspective, logistics. Um. But I don't see this as viable right now, um especially and cost perspective. I do not think that we should pursue this within our current scope. I mean, I, I would love to hear from the public, of course, but I think we have some other opportunities to pursue potentially from our, our trails plan.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for those comments. Um, I would say I completely agree with everything you just said for the longer part. Um, I mean, side-by-sides definitely can get up the speed, but golf carts can't. Uh, but I think doing something potentially with the trails. To allow golf carts would be great, probably not side-by-side, just do their capability when they're full throttle. Um. I mean, yeah, cost-wise, I don't think it really makes sense right now, and with all the roads liability-wise. Um. I mean, I don't know. I personally think that maybe pursuing some of the trails for golf carts. Maybe like a, a special day permit for golf carts kind of deal for the Fourth of July or something along those lines. They can be too much of a taxing. Um. On L C S O for enforcement and trying to track the people down, getting calls and. Kids under the age of, you know, because when this, when you legalize something like this. There's gonna be kids out there that are under sixteen, they don't have driver's license, we're trying to like, oh, let's take the golf cart, you know, and that's never gonna turn out great. Their kids are gonna do. Fun stupid stuff. Um, so. That's where I'm at.
When certainly I share the mayor as well as trustee daily's concerns. I mean, certainly as far as, you know, general safety concerns and that sort of thing. I think that, you know, one of the big issues we would have is certainly trying to figure out how. Uh, O H Bs are gonna get from the one side I twenty-five to the other. I presume that would be the pedestrian underpass. I don't know, I don't know how safe that is in, in general, but you know, obviously with the, the signage costs and the staffing as far as O, O H V registration and these types of things. Certainly we would want registration fees to. Make sure that that's paying for staffing as well as the signage costs and that sort of thing, but. Uh, and then one of the other concerns I would have would of course be noise. Um, I would figure. We would probably want to limit these if we were gonna do something like this to a certain hours, you know, something like. You know, can't be writing it off after nine o'clock or ten o'clock or whatever that may be, but. I, 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 I have been considering this over the last number of months. I've talked to a number of different residents about it, and when I first considered it, I was like, holy smokes, this sounds, sounds really cool. Really love to do it, but the more that I think about it, I. I don't know. It, I definitely have concerns.
So I would, the concerns that I would have would primarily be, especially me, some about one concern of, you know, a lot of the place that I've seen, a lot of that. Off, more of the off-road type is on the east side of the freeway, and if we're trying to find a way to get people into. Downtown, which I think is a great idea, especially if we can't help the parking. I think that's awesome. But then it's like, well, how are we gonna get them there? Because we've already talked about that bridge is a nightmare over I twenty-five, so obviously. Having them go, and it's a state highway, so, so just a bad, bad plan to do, do it through there. So then do we have another way to get them there? That's a concern. Um, the other area of concern would be, um, what is it gonna be on us to regulate this? You know, are we gonna have to hire a new staff position? Just to handle registration on this, and I mean, we're not gonna, I, I could be wrong. I, I don't think that we would bring in enough revenue through that to. Um, I could be wrong, but to pay for that position, so there's a cost there. Um, that being said, I mean, it is something, I'm not opposed to exploring the idea. I'm not explore, I'm not opposed to putting some more into that to see. You know, does it make more sense to tie it into trails? Does it make sense to look at another option to get people from the east side to the west side? Um, because that is one of the things we hear from people all the time. If we can, we talk about wanting to get more people in downtown, have more vibrant, I mean, if this is a tool to help us do that. If we can find a way to make it work, I think it's a great idea. So I have some concern with it, but I'm open to exploring the idea.
I'm definitely open to exploring the ideas. I think it's probably gonna have to be a little bit more of a long-range thing. Uh, we definitely need to be looking at uh what's gonna be happening out at Blaine and some of the different things and seeing. If the need is as much as what we wanted to be, to have it here. Uh, because it's gonna have, you know, it's gonna have a significant cost to it, and just like. Expansion of the uh, you know, building in town and everything else, it needs to pay its own way also, I would think. So through registration, whatever, I don't know if we can actually. Probably would have to have some type of licensing for anybody that is driving in the city, and again, that's more uh cost for the city too, so. But, you know, I think we probably should explore it. We should not just, you know. Kill it completely and, you know, stadium, maybe put it out to the uh citizens of our town, see how much demand there is out there. And uh, from that, let's figure from there, if we gotta explore.
Uh, the only thing we didn't see was what the cost was for these towns that do implement the registrations. Do you know how much they charge?
Oh, the registration fee? I can, I can get that number for uh the board for sure. I think it varies among uh communities. If. Of a community, for example, like in Hinsdale County, if they receive a lot of tourism uh benefit from it, they're, they're receiving that income in a different way. So the registration is going to reflect. Different costs than if it is non-tourism related. So I can get kind of a range of you examples for that.
Then you gotta figure with the delay, that's gonna bring some tourism to this town, but that's gonna be a few years off right now, I believe, at the quickest. So like I said, I don't think we need to jump in and build. All of our efforts into it right now, but we did, I think it would be definitely worth exploring into.
So do we wanna really explore all of these HOVs? Or O H Vs, sorry?
I think it may be a good idea to start with looking at like day permits for golf carts for special events. I have significant safety concerns about. This and from part of my experience.
Side-by-side on asphalt, I have major concerns.
We have a large population of high school students that are getting ready to drive. Okay, this, this is extremely concerning. I work in a community that has O H V ATV trails right now. All of the concerns that we have talked about tonight. Are valid, and there's, if we deal with it on a frequent basis, noise, underage. Illiquid recreation vehicles, and we have an in-house police department that deals with this specifically. L C S O, this is not part of the contract. This is an ancillary function. That is gonna require a different level of enforcement that's gonna be extremely difficult. And the reason why it works in our community for recreation is because we're surrounded by open space, B L M land. Where they're riding their ATV vehicles and going off jumps and doing outdoor recreating. Commuting around in the community on those types of vehicles is not safe. It's not a good idea. I am very much for the golf cart for short-term special event type situations, but opening our community up to this. This risk is not, not a good idea. I'm not in support of that at all.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not in support of the side-by-side, if the prime being. Golf carts, I'd be interested in looking into, but something with parks and trails personally. I mean, side-by-side on asphalt, you're just asking people to roll over. I mean, in all reality, they're not designed for sticking to asphalt. They're designed to stick in dirt, loose stuff. Um. You try to turn one of those things and it's locked in, pull the driver and tip it over at five mile an hour or fifty, doesn't matter. Um, I've seen it plenty of times. Um, I did last time.
Well, and half of our roads are not paved. Half of our roads are dirt.
Right. And then, and then trying to get, like, if somebody is in violation, how can you pursue them? They're gonna outrun the cop car.
You can't, it's because.
They're gonna go off-road and just.
Pursuing, pursuing them needs a higher risk by putting citizens in danger. So they're, they, they don't pursue them, and that's a problem. That's an. It's very some worse than a problem.
Yeah. So I had a question. So how, you know, we talked a lot about cost for signage and things like that. If we were to explore something like doing, you know, maybe a couple of days throughout the year, we do like the special permits for golf cart. Would that be significantly less of a drain in terms of staff resources? Did it do something on a smaller scale start or?
I think if there's an, if it's an exemption day, um, there's not like a general. Registration process, that'd be significantly less staff time. Um, I think it would still, there would still need to be a level of insurance and.
No, I'm sure there is, but I'm saying versus trying to figure out, okay, we gotta change road signs and all this other stuff, but if we were to say, maybe, and maybe we. Do that as a pilot, where we say, okay, maybe on the Fourth of July, and if there's some other date that's significant, where it's like, hey, this might be a good time to allow people. Uh, there's a process they go through, they still have to show, they've gotta sign up, they've gotta register their golf cart, they have to do that, because. Yeah.
Maybe designate a road that they can travel on.
And maybe that is a way that, one, it allows us to see how many people would actually take advantage of it, because if we see that there's. Hundreds of applications, where it's like, maybe we should do a bit more of that, but it allows us to do that in a way that. We can. We can kind of see, you know.
I am curious to, I know I'm putting him on the spot, but just, fourth of July is a very busy day for L C S O. But on, on that potential, if there would be additional staff needed for that designation.
Uh, sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, all good, um, if we were to do a pilot program on the fourth of July where, um, residents would apply for an exemption permit. In which they would operate a golf cart, provide insurance, provide all the necessary, um, documents. And we, we give a designated route for them to take just for the day of the event. Would that be additional staffing needed for, for your team in order? To ensure the safety of the community beyond the things you were already doing for enforcement with fireworks and. Um, the influx of population in general.
Obviously, that's a, that's a big unknown, you know, you've just never experienced it before, I don't think that we would need any additional staffing just to monitor. Um, that type of activity, um, but obviously there's, there's always the first year, um, and then we could. Kind of adjust after that, I, I just, I don't know. Uh, at this point, because we've just never had to deal with it.
Does Kremlin have statistics on accidents, injuries and all that type of stuff that V A P V's and that kind of stuff?
I mean, I, I mean. Camping trip I did with twenty people last summer. Everybody had a side by side, five of them made it all.
Really?
I mean, yeah, we did hear a lot about the extra impact it puts on emergency services. But we deal with it year round because we also have snowmobiling.
Right.
When you're in the mountains and you drive differently when you're camping in the mountains than what you would drive. You know, on roads and streets with most of our streets are neighborhoods and most of them are twenty-five miles per hour under. I can think of maybe a handful of roads that are actually over twenty-five miles per hour, and those are those main collectors that we have been talking about. So. It's a visibility thing, because you can't see those A T Vs and golf carts over the hood of a car or a truck. Especially if people aren't abiding by the, the red, you know, lines in front of the post office and stuff. That's, and so, I mean, but, you know.
Yes, sir, um, we happen to have deputy Zach Anderson in the room, he is the community impact deputy for the town of Bertha, in the town of Bertha. Uh, where they allow golf carts, uh, so you might have an interesting perspective on everything.
Um, so I'm really happy to get you guys in contact with our town with it, so they legalized it, we don't have a legal licensing requirement right now. Just cause the town wanted to approve it with the T P C golf course that's down there, uh, cause those roadways within that neighborhood are actually town owned. So obviously the golf, golf course being multi-billion dollar companies like, hey, we need this to go, like, we're actually a golf course. And then they needed to allow it in the town, so, um, there's restrictions that Bertha has on it, so, um, it has to be a licensed adult that's driving. Obviously, you can't be drunk on a golf cart, you can still get a D U I, um, caught up all that stuff. And then it's pretty limited on where it could go, so it can only go on a road that's twenty-five and over. And then anything else like U T Vs, side by sides, anything that does over twenty-five is illegal still. So it's just golf court, golf carts specifically, that are still legalized, um, and then it's limited, so like, been to Bertha, like, can't go on First Street. Uh, any of the highways that includes like Mountain Avenue, you can cross it, you just can't like drive down it. Um, we haven't dealt with a ton of issues with it, we might get the occasional kids that, um, are driving around in it, but it's pretty easy to pick them out if. Um, you know, your town and, uh, like, you just show up at their house and you're like, hey, you got enough of this off, more that's our host, no, they are, right? Um, but obviously, uh, most of the time we see is that like our special events, it hasn't caused us, at least in, uh, our jurisdiction, any. Extra staffing stuff, and then we haven't had any like crashes or anything like that involved in the golf carts, obviously it's pretty limited where they can drive them. Um, and most of the people are limited to daytime because we require if they're gonna drive them at night, that you have things like headlights, taillights. All that kind of stuff, turn signals, um, if it's going on, and most of the people just don't wanna pay for the extras on their golf carts, they're just using it. The butts around like at birthday days or the fourth of July that we have, um, that kind of stuff, and then you obviously can't take it on like sidewalks, bike paths and that. That sort of stuff, so, um, obviously something you're exploring, you guys are more than welcome to reach out to our town, cause they, um, approved it through the ordinance and. Uh, the municipal code, um, and then we kind of enforced it, and then it hasn't been like a huge undertaking on us to. To do it, obviously if we expand beyond that, that could create some headaches, but, um, the golf carts, at least for the start of. Bertha is what they kind of started with when they got approached it, and it hasn't been, um, tremendous on us, we've got a couple complaints on it, but they're pretty easy to. Track down on our end of it, um, and track them down, and but most of it's daytime use anyways, so.
Awesome, thank you, that is super helpful, kind of the generalized idea and looking at it.
Moving forward, we're looking at golf carts.
So certainly, and, and Bertha is very similar to Windsor, and I was in Windsor when we allowed golf carts, and it was specific because of the golf ball, golf courses. And that's what happened in Bertha as well, there was a, there, there was a gap that needed to be filled. And that's what I'm always looking for when I'm looking at the town of Wellington and what, what does staff need to work on, what's really important, what's, what are those really important top priorities? And what are those gaps? And if you all feel that this is one of those gaps that you want staff to spend time on, we will certainly do that. I think I heard from you, maybe day permits for special events is something we would look at. I think trustee Daly brought up a good point of looking at the Parks and Trails Master Plan when it comes up. That we maybe look at options for those side by sides and O H Bs and things like that. Um, so. Again, trying to, uh, we've got a lot of projects going on and we're, we're being asked with a lot of different things, I wanna make sure that this is a priority for you and you want. Town staff to be putting time into this, because it means it will probably mean Hallie's not working on something else. And I don't know what that is yet, I can't say, but I'm, I'm just saying every time. You say, well, we would like for you to do some more work on this, it means that we're probably kicking something else off.
Yeah.
So beyond, uh, the fourth of July, what would be like the next small scale event for? That we would use golf carts for.
Yeah.
But that's, but you're drinking there, so, yeah, maybe not a good idea.
And it's too cold during parade of light, I mean, people could do it, but it'd be.
Halloween is, it's probably the times that Main Street's closed, you've got the trick or treat down Main Street, Main Street's closed, you've got the. Parade of lights and you've got fourth of July, those are typically the only times that we close down Cleveland.
Right, right.
So if you think about the big events, those are the three.
So I think that, like, fourth of July planning starts on July fifth. I, you know, seeing what comes out of Parks Master Plan and then maybe looking at a golf cart option for like maybe a future fourth of July. Or finding a smaller event tested at that we don't serve alcohol. And close Main Street could be an option to see if it is. Worth investing a lot of staff time.
Or, you know, it could be an option to promote, um, our farmers markets or something like that, maybe there's a special farmer's market that. That we want to, or it's the national night out.
Yeah.
I have, I have a couple of comments if I could. And I'm just gonna be like super honest here, um, the only time I'll, I would drive a side by side is to do jumps. That's what, that's, I wanna put that out there, the only time I generally opt to drive a golf cart is when I've been drinking. So did not drive the car, I'm just gonna be completely honest, that's what a lot of people would think, so. I don't think what we should do that, I don't think what I, I maybe think that we should pursue, especially with such short notice. Is maybe consider adding to an event permit. The exclusion for those putting on an event to utilize golf carts. For the purpose of managing the event. As of right now, so the golf carts that are utilized by the event staff, by the event organization. For those people utilizing an event through the event permitting process that's already created. I think I see that as already a creative process, just another checkbox of. Will you be using golf carts or no? If so, are they insured? Like those type of things. But I guarantee you, if we're allowing people to utilize golf carts for special events, they will use that. As their designated driver, like they'll use that thinking that that's what they should do and for drunk driving. I'm, I'm just gonna be completely honest, that's what people utilize it as. Instead of driving their cars, they'll drive their drunk, that they will drunk drive their golf carts, so, um. I just wanna put that warning out there, I don't know if we should jump into this necessarily, and it's definitely not a top priority for me. And not something I think that we should be utilizing, uh, staff time for above. Lot of other items that, that we should probably be working on.
Not everyone feels that way about people utilizing the golf carts for drunk driving, I just wanna put that out there, cause I, I'm not gonna lay that on our entire community. That they would choose to drunk drive if they can drive a golf cart, they're just putting that out there. Um, if this isn't something that you guys want to pursue right now. It is what it is, I'm, I'm open for pursuing it, but. There has to be a way, I mean, the town that you had spoke about that uses the highway access, they're actually in their. Second, third year approval, so they went through their first three years and then they just got approved for that second, so they're on their. Good ahead onto their six years of doing this, and they said they had saw such great success with it. And positive feedback, which is why they extended it, and it was being utilized in the first place. You can also look on the website that they have, it'll tell you any accidents. The counts of tickets, if anyone's received it, it gives you all of that feedback and information, it's not super high. It's pretty much more dangerous to drive a motorcycle on our roads that is legally licensed than it was to. Drive a side by side or a golf cart up in that area, cause I had done, cause I sent you the research, I had done a lot of research on this when it was first. Asked of me by a resident, so.
Yeah, I don't know, so this is worth our town's time with everything that we have on our plate currently. I mean, do we wanna take them off of something that's potentially more important to do something that's more or less. Privilegis, in a sense, I mean, we don't have recreation that's readily available. Liability. It's pretty huge. Um, I, I don't know, I, I, I don't think we should be pursuing this right now, in all honesty. It's a great idea, I would love, I would love to, don't get me wrong, but I don't think we have the resources, the money. The things to be able to do this properly, do it right, even getting really out of it other than wasting kind of money.
Hey, if we have a golf course who wants, is interested in Wellington, that might be another story, but. I don't, yeah, I don't think that's the case. Our water.
Well, I, I think, and I agree, I think this is, the topic itself is good, I, I believe that there is. There could be some options, but I, right now, we just have a lot going on, I think maybe we bring this back and in. When we start talking about the twenty, after, let's see, the next election, twenty twenty-four, this next strategic plan and the goals. And maybe this is something, I mean, hopefully by then we'll have some of that Parks and Trails Master Plan done, I don't wanna lose it, I just, the timing is, is just.
Maybe a little too premature.
It's, it's difficult, and I, and it's something that, you know, I know we would want to probably do this summer, so, um. I'd be, I'm happy to put it on our list of topics to, um, readdress, um, next year. Um, I think trustee Teets had even mentioned that she was okay with, you know, if we need to wait and look at the twenty twenty-four budget item, if we need to. Have, have some staffing to help with monitoring or however that looks, that's something we can look at for twenty twenty-four.
I think, I think that's smart.
Only concern that I have with that is if we talked about whether or not this should be incorporated into the Parks and Trails Master Plan. If we wait to have a discussion about it until after that master plan is done, we've. So.
But maybe forward, knowing this is something that we're interested in.
Are we saying that we want, i- i- if we're gonna say, that's fine, but we need to say. If we want them to actually incorporate that into the master plan, we kinda need to give that direction, we, we've had it. There are, this is a possibility, but we haven't actually said, yes, this should be considered in the master plan, and if we're not gonna revisit this until after. Election next year and the Parks and Trails Master Plan is done, and we've never given that direction, so if we're going to give that direction, we need to give that direction. If we're not gonna give that direction, we need to make, I just think we need to be clear, if that's gonna be part of the consideration, we need to give that direction prior to that master plan.
I will find out the timing for that Parks and Trails Master Plan, because I'm not quite sure when, unless trustee Daly knows. Um, the exact timing for that, so it.
I think our appeal's out in the fall.
Okay, so our appeal will go out in the fall, so we would be right on track for twenty twenty-four then, if the R P goes out in the fall, then it's not, it's. That'll so fall, um, maybe first part of the years when everything will get finalized and can start being worked on, so.
Right, but if we, so I, I'm, I, that's fine, I'm just saying, do we wanna give direction that we want them to look into, our highway vehicles as part of that master plan? And that way they can take that into consideration.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Okay, good plan. Yes, absolutely. Alright, quick recess, thank you, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we actually need to follow through on that because otherwise. It's, I mean, I see this a lot in other areas of government where it's it's virtue signaling. Say, hey, guess what? We're good people because we have water restriction, but we're never actually going to enforce them, but look at us because we have them. It's like. Well, we're not actually, if our goal is actually to make sure that people don't overuse the water plants. And we're saying this is the tool we have chosen to use for that. Then we need to actually apply that tool. Otherwise, let's go and I suggested before and say, okay, we're gonna focus on the informational and education route, work with us. But if we're gonna go the other route, we need to actually go the other route and follow through on that, not just say we're going the hard route, but. And I'm happy enforcement, we already have in code, we don't need to add new enforcement, keep the fines and stuff as in the code, we just need to actually do it.
Well, what I'm hearing is that we have implemented different measures to be able to enforce. Responsible water usage, but the we go through this rigmarole war every year because. The code says mandatory, so what I'm hearing is that maybe we need to look at. A water restriction enforcement code that fits. The way that we do it here in the community instead of. Having discuss the discussion every year. So if we're going with an education model, let's change it from mandatory to. Like, these are the steps, like, is that an option?
That is an option. I would say the town is in a unique situation right now. With the treatment plants under the expansion process. Um, I think this is a great conversation to update. Once we have our plants at full capacity, um, I would encourage. The mandatory restrictions just for public consumption for the next two years while we finish. Um, these plants, but I do think that is a great conversation that does need to happen. Um, for a long term plan with watering restrictions and enforcement and education versus information. Um, I pro- I apologize if my initial presentation. Seemed like then it was encouraging more of the voluntary approach. It mostly was the the research that I'm doing. Wellington is a unique situation and the re- research I was looking at was mostly based on drought. Um, which is a great indicator that the town will need to look at. Of of course, but um, we're in a unique situation where I think. The mandatory restrictions should need to be in place for the the treatment capacity of our plants.
So the the challenge that I have with the mandatory enforcement use is it's encouraging. Neighbor telling our neighbors, kind of like with the snow removal situation. So with the in the enforcement plan. I guess what I was looking for, are we gonna be monitoring people's water usage? And then like. How are we gonna determine the difference between somebody who's addressing a garden or?
I mean, but but for a community to function well. If there's something that's mandatory, wouldn't you more or less watch your neighbor? To say something if you were doing something that wasn't right and could potentially harm the community. If we can't treat the water. The plant goes down because we're overworking the pumps or whatever the case may be. I would rather have my neighbor turn me in. Than not turn me in. I would want it to be mandatory and enforced.
We have no backup. I think that's at the end of the day.
Protect our water. And if we're on such a heavy load in the summertime. I mean, I say we keep it as it is, but enforce it and. Yeah, sure, maybe it's, you know, there's gonna be those people out there like, you know, I don't rat or I'm not a rat. I'm not a snitch. Well, that whole culture to me is kind of a joke. I think we just need to protect our community and protect our plants.
So I would agree with the mayor pro 10. I don't, I do not want this to turn into a, we're encouraging neighbors against neighbors. That's.
We're not urging them against them. I I I I think that. If we're gonna have you see a drunk driver, do you call the sheriff's department? Do you call the number you that I mean, they're breaking the law.
Isn't a better model to be, go knock on their neighbor's door and say, hey, your hose has been running all night long instead of calling.
I would say that. I would say go tell your neighbor, be like, hey, just a heads up, but I don't think we should have. A spot on the website that's like, report your neighbor to hear the water violation.
So then let's not do that, but let's make it enforcement, mandatory enforcement.
What hasn't worked about how we've been operating in the last year or two.
Is what we were told this last year when I brought this up is we weren't enforcing it.
Is it? So is it, is the issue because we're not enforcing it or because there's a a a problem because we're not enforcing it? Is there a problem because it's not being enforced? Or are we just saying that we're not enforcing it? So it's our problem.
So what I found, I talked to Cody today, just as a follow up and as a reminder to see how it's been, how it worked in the past. Was that when somebody was reported or um, our code enforcement was driving around and saw somebody watering on an off day. They got like a door hanger, you know, just a reminder, this is thi- this is. The thi- this is what we do. This is our ordinance or our resolution and. And then there was not a, and he was documenting those addresses and then he didn't get a call back or didn't, you know, as he was driving around, he wouldn't see that. Person or that residence watering off. Off cycle again. We did have some reports from public works. A couple of different times that they they found, you know, we have one code enforcement officer. So it's kind of like the police went during on fireworks, you know, you know, they get the call that, you know, so and so, you know, at twelve ten. You know, Joe Street is, you know, watering, it's not their day. And by the time they get over there, the water is off. Type thing. So it's really hard to monitor, but um, from. From our perspective, from the town and what we have documented, that once somebody received the educational information, they didn't, they they complied. So that was why there was no enforcement. I mean, it was, we enforced through the educational piece and then. A- as a follow up, we did not see them. Out of compliance again. Again, there were some reports from public works, but again, it was, you know, and and not that. They could not do it, but they had no enforcement capability. So it was like, you know, a call or they, you know. You know, let let code enforcement know by the time code enforcement got over, it was, you know, there was nothing to prove.
So question, show hands, who followed the watering restrictions last year? Cause you got what?
Did you, did you, did you get a door hanger?
I don't know if there is, I don't, and I wanna make sure it's clear. I don't, my issue with it is not that, oh, it didn't work last year. My issue is the same as it's been for the last three years is that. I'm opposed to us saying this is a rule that we are going to enforce and there's a penalty. And then we as elected officials kind of said expressly the last three years, but we're not actually gonna enforce it. Which to me is why I said, well, if we're gonna go that route, let's just go the route of information and education, but. If we're gonna enforce it. We need to not be this like, cause it's the whole thing of. We want to do this, but we don't want people mad at us because they got, you know, they got a ticket for watering because they hit it multiple times. So. Got a question or comment?
Hey, yeah, a lot of what I was thinking has already been said. Um, I I'm a big fan of. Warnings, if I were to get pulled over for speeding, I think whoever is pulling me over should have the authority. To decide whether or not I should get a warning or a ticket, especially to determine if my actions are. Malicious or outrageous or, you know. With intent to hurt or put other people at risk. Um, so I think we should. You know, our professional staff who has that authority and that professional. Opinion would have. That background to determine how significant that threat might be, to determine the appropriate actions. So, I mean, if someone's speeding, for example, and they aren't posing a significant public safety threat. Um, and it was on accident. Well, I don't know if speeding is on accident ever, but you know, a safety would do the trick. And they get it and then they're gonna comply going forward. I think that accomplishes what we're trying to do in that education. Does what we need to and it holds the law, which is the mandatory restriction. So now someone then chooses to. Be outrageous following that in spite of after being educated and having an opportunity to comply. Then absolutely, and we have those steps already in place. So if those scenarios have not yet occurred. Then I don't think that we're saying that we have failed to do that in the past, but those scenarios have just yet to happen. So I think stick with what we got. We've been lucky and we've seen in the data. How the improvements of the water usage have been when the mandatory restrictions have gone in place. I mean, the data has come back to us and we've seen. As a spot of the restrictions went in place on this month and we saw the improvements. Um, when Bob came back and showed us the data. So, I mean, this works. We see the improvements overall and we have a plan in place already for enforcement, but luckily we haven't had to do it. Now, see something, say something, sure, but let's leave it up to the professionals to enforce it. Um, with the plan we already have in place. I think, I think we're in a good spot already. I'm happy with how we have it.
I speak a little bit to kind of how this would work in municipal court, um, just very briefly. I I think there would be a real concern with. Issuing citation, you know, not citation, but if we issue a summons and say, on the very first offense, you're gonna go to court. And so, I mean, the current process really is, if if they, if somebody sees a violation that has co-compliance ability. The first thing they're gonna do is provide a door hanger and that provides notice, like that's, that is, that is the town telling the person, this is an ordinance and you have to comply with it. If that didn't happen first and they went to court and they were just received a summons the first time. The court would absolutely say, did you know this was a law? And they would say, well, I had no idea. You don't. Follow every town board meeting, you know, you don't watch every meeting. Um, so I I think that education piece is is a vital first step in the enforcement process. So I think our current process.
Is great.
It works as it should, um, in terms of how the summons, eh, we haven't had any summons. Because the first step would be making sure they know and it's essentially a warning, a door hanger or something like that. And in our experience, that that has been affected.
Okay, so in the last, last year, we didn't have one situation where someone received more than one notification.
Not that I know of.
So I don't have a problem with like one warning, but the problem is is before it was. We as trustees kind of explicitly had kind of given direction. I really don't wanna see people fine unless it's like egregious. That was really what we. I was part of those exceptions, yeah. And so I'm turning with giving people warning, but it, I I think it needs to be, you get one warning. If we're back here again. You're getting the summons. Yeah, I mean, I I don't think there's, oh, you we warned you, oh, I went on the case, forgot, I'm sorry. You had your warning, this time you're getting the summons because it. It is getting to the point where when I'm talking to people, they're trying to say, well, they're not gonna enforce it. I'm just gonna do whatever I want. Why would I follow the restrictions? You're not gonna find me anyways. And. That's not, but it goes completely against our purpose to get there. So I'm fine with. They get a warning, now you know, and then.
Really quick, um, so and I understand all of this and either which way is fine. But then the ordinance needs changed because it reads, the board of trustees shall have the authority to establish such rules and regulations. So as to limit the days, hours of outdoor watering and sprinkling, or to limit the use of water in such a man manner. As the town board shall deem necessary, such regulations may be adopted by resolution and shall become effective immediately upon passage. Enforcement shall be by summons issued in accordance with the section of this code. And the property of any user violating this provision shall be subject to utility service termination. Each day that such violation continues to exist shall be considered a separate offense. So as our law reads now. It says that enforcement is a summons. It doesn't discuss a warning, it doesn't discuss anything. It discusses that enforcement shall be a summons. Issued in accordance with our laws. So that's.
If it's enforced, it would be by summons. It's just that before a summons is issued for enforcement, they are making sure there's notice. I think that's perfectly in. Compliance with that that ordinance. I don't, I wouldn't wanna put in the ordinance, uh, a a single warning issue. Um, I think if the board wanted to put that by resolution, this ordinance allows you to set rules and regulations to how this is done. But our current process is enforcement is by summons. It's just that hasn't been necessary so far.
Well, she brought that valid point. I mean, part of that says shall and shall is black and white and what it should say is may.
No, um, because.
It's, she, she read it. It's a. There's no between the gray.
When enforcement happens, there is no gray. Before enforcement, you can give a warning.
But that's not. So warning is part of the enforcement process. What we're saying is. Is that the first step of enforcement is education and the second step of enforcement is the fine, right? So it just needs to either be worded differently or.
When this is being enforced, it is by someone. What this is, this statement is saying is when then. Um, enforcement shall be by summons. That's saying enforcement, it's not saying enforcement shall be by ticket or something else. When this is enforced, it is by summons. Uh, a notice before that is perfectly in alignment with enforcement being by our current process. I I'm not sure how we would change this.
An issue here, quite frankly, I I like the language that's here, uh, to agree with the trustee daily. I, I think this makes a lot of sense and and to what Ms. Sheldon said earlier, right? All this is about for now. Is protecting the water plant until twenty twenty four, right? After that. Get these restrictions out of here. Just get them out of here, right? After that point, but until that's done, right? So. I like the language that we've got on the books, quite frankly, and the fact that we haven't had any repeat offenders over the last number of years. I don't, I don't see a problem given, I suppose.
So as a board, can we. Kind of direction this is great to go ahead with. We continue with the process and just. We as a board collectively will say enforcement follows if, you know, you don't keep warning. I mean, that's pretty fair. Not to say, instead of blatantly saying, well, it won't be enforced, but well, it will be enforced if if it's needed.
And I would say down the road, if we do become into an extreme situation. We can go ahead and make more extreme enforcement at that point. You know, DEFCON one to DEFCON two at that point, you know? And I think the educational part initially is great. And again, the cost of water here is its own restriction.
You would think so until you look at the numbers that they released from the water treatment plant. So all of those numbers that were released from the water treatment plant, so we have these and we were sharing information and sharing data last year. There were signs in neighborhoods saying to conserve water and there's restrictions and we saw higher usage last year than the year previously.
I think we're kind of going up. We're not, I I have my own bit, so I am personally opposed to mandatory restrictions, but I think that we should go forward with, if we're gonna do mandatory restrictions. That we just make it clear that our policy is board is, we're making sure people are aware of the law. So if we see that, you're gonna get a notification and. Maybe there's wording we can throw somewhere else in there. If there is, great. If there's not, as long as staff and this has been practice. But I think what I wanna make sure is clear is that the policy of the board is, if we're back again. There's not a second warning. You are now, you're now under, now you can go to the judge and that you have your day in court and if the judge decides that there's a valid reason. Great, but that shows people that we're taking this seriously. So don't, don't roll the dice and just say, that's my thought process. If if I'm gonna do it, it's why I'd like to see it done.
Thank you. Perfect. We'll have this on your next agenda and we'll work with Dan to get some information to make sure that we get all your points covered and it does say in there. If water production level probably below. What's required that the town engineer and the town administrator can and make those decisions about how those mandatory water. Like severe watering restrictions could be taken care of from an administrative standpoint.
Thank you.
Uh, absolutely. Thanks, you guys. Great discussion.
Uh, next one is marijuana sales tax, charity campus.
Evening, mayor, members of the board. Um, so this evening I wanted to talk to you about some of the logistics of rolling out our marijuana sales tax revenue since we may be. Seeing that come in later this year, early next year. Um, I wanted to break down what the different taxes are gonna look like for the town and what we are proposing to do with it. Um, so first, we have our regular Wellington sales tax, that's three percent. Um, we passed in twenty twenty when we passed the sale of recreational marijuana to impose. By ordinance, a three percent sales tax on marijuana. This can be increased to five percent after. What January.
Is that on top of the already three percent?
Um, so right now we have a little wiggle room with what was written and passed for the local marijuana tax. It's currently set at three and a half percent. You as a board can by ordinance raise it up to five percent or leave it at three percent. Yeah, um, so the other two types of marijuana revenue, you have your state of Colorado marijuana excise tax. That's a fifteen percent tax imposed on our marijuana sales. We would see five percent of the fifteen percent imposed. Um, that's the same with the marijuana sales tax with the state. We receive this money much like we do the uh, cigarette tax money, so it will come from the state, it will be sent to us separately. Uh, the sales tax for Wellington will be in the pot with all of our sales tax revenue. And then the local marijuana sales tax will be something that we will have to self-collect. So we have three different revenue streams coming in in three different manners from marijuana money. Um, so the voters approved certain uses for your sales tax revenue. Um, it was for. Uh, future community recreation centers or to go to the general fund. Um, because of Tabor, we can only limit those two purposes for this revenue. Uh, based on your strategic plan. What that is proposing is that we create a separate. Community develop, community center development funds. Where the three pots of money, the local marijuana sales tax, the state excise tax. And the state sales tax all goes into a separate fund. The sales tax that we received with all of our general sales tax would go into the general fund with the rest of it. Um, the purpose of creating this separate fund is that we can isolate that money and we can really track how much we're getting. Um, the reason why we are proposing to separate this out is. This is brand new business. We have not seen any of this revenue. We don't know how much we're gonna get. And I think being able to set it out for a specific purpose instead of designating it to a. Need needed expense immediately, we're not putting ourselves in a financial situation where we become dependent on that money. Because we don't have certainty of what it's going to be. Um, I also think, you know, designating these funds. In that manner, we can set it annually, so it doesn't have to be going to that purpose every year. It can change year over year. Um, this gives you guys a little wee way to really understand the market. And see how much we could do in two, five, ten years towards a community center. So I think the next steps would be. We would need direction from you as to, do we change the local marijuana sales tax rate? Do you wanna keep it at three and a half percent? Do you want to increase it? Um, we would work if your direction were approved to create that separate fund to track the money separately. Um, and then I think we would need to monitor until twenty twenty five because that would give us at least the full year of revenue. To see what we could be expecting annually. Um, after that, if you did have direction to change the percentage, we could take that to the finance committee. And do some analysis of what would be a marketable local marijuana sales tax rate. So, that is all I have.
Like to note the exact language of the ordinance with regard to the uses of the 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 money, um. Says, board trustees, you're right, declares the purpose of the levy of the marijuana, retail marijuana sales tax imposed by this article is for raising funds for construction of a new community. Or recreation center and or other general operating expenses that may be designated by the town on an annual basis. So. The charity and I talked about this quite a bit and it's certainly community and recreation center is. Clearly stated in there, but there then there's the and or general operating expenses, which is a real broad. Um, so as you're thinking about what to use this money for, just that's the language that that's in there.
Let's do, we can increase it from three and a half to five. Is it just through us? And, uh, yeah, I would think initially five percent would be the smart. Uh, thought for us because again, we don't know exactly, exactly what this is going to put on the town. Whether it's the, uh. The policing, whether it's the, uh. Wear and tear on the roads and all this type of stuff. And then also too, I think we need to probably designate that money, not, you know, a little bit of it, at least go into the general fund. Because.
So that proposal, the three percent sales tax that are regular sales tax. Would be going to the general.
Okay, but even the other five on top of that. Well, you got ten percent, then you got to three and a half percent, and then you got three percent, or is it just three and a half?
No, it'd be, it'd be total of sixteen, yeah, or sorry, it's sorry, eighteen.
Three, three, five, five and five.
Okay.
Well, so it's five and fifteen. Have a hundred dollars of pot sold, the state tax is fifteen dollars, we see seventy five percent, seventy five cents of that. It it's very minimal what we are gonna get from the state.
Okay, you got fifteen on the excise, fifteen on the sales tax. And we get five off the each one of those.
Five off of the fifteen percent.
Which is it? Because you have two on here. Where we end, you have the sales tax, are those the same thing?
We get five of the fifteen percent is. There's two fifteen percent and we get five two kind of that fifteen, so it's a big.
One or off of two?
So it's like for every thirty dollars, the state tax is up of the hundred, we get a dollar fifty.
Okay, so it's a gym, okay.
So if you look on page forty five, she broke it out really well, and I think the only thing, cause we don't have a choice on the two fives. The state regulate.
And then the state.
Third one, all you're wanting to know is if we want that to remain at the three point five or we want it to go up to a five percent.
It it was written to where you guys can't increase it.
Can't change it in January twenty twenty two.
After January first, twenty twenty two, since we passed that date.
Now we can choose if we want it to remain three point five or to go up to the full five percent.
Or anywhere in between.
Right, yeah. I think that's pretty much all you're asking from us, correct?
Do, how how do you want this set up? Do you want? The three pots of money set aside for a community development fund that you guys can track year over year and we can. That separated from the rest of our budget, so we can. Actively work towards achieving a goal of the community rec center.
But then we also have.
The three percent sales tax that would go into the general.
And that's because it's, you know, collect the general sales tax, that that's all in like one big lump sum. They don't break that out. They don't break that out and that that three percent sales tax, like I would just take that out of your brain. That's just gonna go into general operation.
Three and a half or fives separate? And then the five percent off each one of the other two is separate.
And the purpose for me setting it up that way is that there were. Two avenues that we could use these funds for. And during your strategic plan process, it was very clear that we wanted to work towards a community development center. And we wanted to work towards increasing our sales tax revenue and our fiscal sustainability. So if we split it up in those two ways, we're meeting your strategic plan goals. And we're also not earmarking that money for an immediate. Necessary need that we could become dependent on later and not fulfill the wishes of voters.
Like a vacation farm.
Yeah.
Right.
So you're not going and hiring three, three employees to manage it and then next year finding out that, oh crap, we don't need those three employees. Cause we didn't pull as much money off of it. My one question is, is that one percent sales and use tax? That is still going towards the construction and reconstruction of Wellington streets, correct?
That's separate. That's it. That's not marijuana money, tax money. I I mean, it's incorporated in your total sales tax lump sum. So yes, that is still going to the streets, but this is going to be an additional. Income in your sales tax revenue that you'll see in the overall general fund.
Got it. Okay, so that was my question, was making sure that we were still going to see, so that lump sum that we're receiving. One percent of that three, one percent is going to the construction and reconstruction of roads and whatnot.
Yes.
Perfect. As far as the three point five percent, I'm gonna be the devil's advocate on this one going up to the five percent. The catching caveat to raising it this high is something you need to realize is this is a very competitive market now. So you're looking at the the percent that they have to pay to state. Which is excessively high in my understanding, getting ready possibly to go up again. And you have to look at the amount of sales tax they're going to have to pay as a business to operate here in general. And then you have to look at the the cost that comes and then is occurred to them. At the same time, you have to look at if someone has to pay five percent here. But they pay three percent in a different town, are they gonna drive that ten minutes to go buy something that might be cheaper for them? And for Collins, when we're trying to increase our sales tax revenue here.
Well, in all reality, it probably wouldn't be that much cheaper because of gas, no.
Right.
When you start factoring that in. When you start factoring that in, that's offset. Trust you gave you something? Yeah, so um, I don't have a strong opinion either way on the tax portion. I do have a very strong opinion on setting it aside in a fund, and I agree that there should be a fund set aside. I think it should just be a general. Marijuana revenue funds, because yeah, we've identified. Identify and promote development of community gathering spaces. There's been talk of parks, different things like that. We have not reached a point where we said this is for sure gonna be a recreation center, so I do not wanna set those funds aside. Into a fund that is specifically for that, because that can be used for things. I agree, absolutely, we should not be using those funds to hire new staff, things like that. They should be set aside till we know what's going on. But those could be things that could be used to do short term C I P projects that need to be done. That could be used to specifically in line with this, maybe put some things in the parks that the parks fund doesn't have money for.
So you want like specifically capital not operating, so you want to be like.
Right, I prefer that we currently use it for capital while we see what's coming in. So we basically get to the end of the year and say, okay, here's kind of what we have, and we can fund some of these, we can upgrade some of the parks, especially if we wanna focus on gathering spaces. But we also talk about there's areas of roads that maybe we don't have the money for that, that would fall under general fund. So where it's tied to certain short term projects, but. I agree, it needs to be set aside where this is the marijuana money, so we know this is separated out from everything else and we know what's going on. Now, if we identify whether it's this year or next year, that we are for sure pursuing a recreation center, that is one hundred percent, we're going down that road. Then at that point, by all means, let's start shifting that. But we've not had that conversation, and I don't wanna have that conversation tonight. Um, but I don't wanna just stick it in a fund saying, oh, we're this is gonna go towards that. I think it should be put in a fund where it can be used for. A lot of different things. Again, like I said, parks is a great one doing, there's a lot of neither are parks that hasn't, we don't, we just don't have the funds to do right now. And this would directly hit with those community gathering spaces that we've been talking about. And it gives us something where we're not hiring additional staff, we're not tying ourselves into things that we have to keep paying ongoing, so we can actually see what's coming in. And we can determine, great, we have this much money available, that means we can fund these projects out of that. And I think that's how we should go with that. If we are gonna go the routes of sticking it into a community fund, which again, I do not think we should do. The only portion that should go into that is the special marijuana sales tax, the state sales tax needs to be separated out. Because that's not governed by what the voters. So if if we are going to insist on, this is going into a specifically community center development fund. The only portion that should go into that is the local marijuana tax, not even else to go with it, three and a half for the five. The five percent from state, obviously the figure of sales tax, that's already its own thing, simplify. Have a marijuana fund, have a fund. That's just, they learn marijuana revenue, general marijuana revenue.
Hang on, one one quick second, that three percent sales tax from the state. They don't itemize that.
Right.
They collect it and they give you a check.
Yes, that's all the sales tax.
The the state treasurer will not.
No, that's fine, okay, so we won't have that anyways, so there there's no way that could go in.
Right. That local state sales tax rate of three percent.
Is the only portion.
Is the only portion like we we just.
Wanna make sure nothing else is going into that line.
But the other stuff, the variable that we're trying to capture, I agree, that should be. Separate part, I I have a quick question, it's a little different from what the other trustees have asked me. So I would be curious to know what kind of account would we be storing that money in? Would we be looking at some sort of like in investment accounts so that it's building high interest while we're waiting or developing a plan?
What we can do is we can put it into a college trust account, because right now that's the best place for your money. They they have the highest interest rates per day, we are earning a lot of interest on our money in all of our college accounts currently. Uh, logistically, what we would do is we would create a marijuana sales tax fund in Casal. And then we would make sure that that money gets deposited in the college trust. And we'll track it through the cell, and then that'll be part of your monthly financial statements that you see, so you can see what's coming in, we can track it year over year. Because revenue accounts, the way Casal works, they zero out every year, it has to be its own separate fund to keep isolated from the rest of your funds. Um, so we can have that running balance year over year.
Okay, so we can like put the money on pot, let it make money on itself, and then set some sort of like. Threshold on it, so we win that pot, because we don't know how, like we could collect a hundred dollars or we could collect a hundred million dollars, we don't know yet, so, I mean. Like all of our other restricted revenue accounts, like what would be an appropriate like threshold level to where we would start considering using something like that for capital? Would it be two hundred thousand dollars, five hundred thousand dollars or a million? That way we're not like.
I just so. I don't know if I, I, so I'm thinking, so I'm I'm hearing some of the questions that are coming up. And I would like to have the finance committee take it, take a shot at this and talk about what that, what is that? Is it three percent, four percent, five percent, you know, and what are the justification of the recommend, you know, the recommendation and and what is the justification behind it? Present some of those recommendations to the board of trustees, and I think. That what you're talking about, trustee Mc, Mayor Pratam McDonald, would be another one of those items that. That potentially the the finance committee could talk about and provide some recommendations for. Cause I don't think we're gonna get anywhere trying to battle out what we're gonna do.
Right now, we just need to come to the conclusion of what's the tax, and are we putting it in its own fund?
I like four percent. In terms of the middle.
I'd like to comment.
Oh, yes, go for it.
Okay, I think that we need to maximize the tax, I'd love to see five percent. Um, I think that we should benefit as much as possible from marijuana sales in the town. So I I think we should maximize it, I don't think that'll be significant to the consumer. It's it's percentage wise, it is insignificant, but I think over time it would make the town more money. So I really think that we should maximize it. Um, secondly. I think it's a, I think the reason why we have a lot of confusion as to how much money will we make, how much money do we need? It's because we don't have plans for a rec center. We don't even know what kind of rec center we need, we know we need something. We know people are begging for it, but we don't know what it's gonna look like, we don't know what's gonna have, we don't know when it's gonna happen. And I think that's the whole point. But, you know, the voters pass this with a huge intent for it to be used towards a rec center. And that was, that was the word on the street, that's why people voted for it, that was a very significant topic when. When when this was being campaigned for, so. In my, from my perspective, it absolutely needs to be set aside, absolutely. And I think the purpose and role of that money should be for recreation. Absolutely, but but because we don't have a specific plan for a rec center right now. I think it does need to be reserved for recreation, but but solely for that purpose, so that. Potentially, it could pay for the plan to do the needs assessment, so that we do know what we need in the future. But it it needs to go for that purpose of what the what the community wants and what they asked for. Um, so it from my private, from my perspective, it absolutely needs to be separated and saved. And used towards the purpose to go towards the goal of what they wanted and what they voted for, what they asked for. But in this case, it's not an operations for a center that doesn't exist. It might be, how do we get and what kind of center do you need and want? So I think it does need to be separated, but for the sole purpose and protected for recreation.
Thank you. Yeah.
So I I I think personally, I I would love to hear the finance committee's recommendations as far as. I if if I had to say for myself personally. I think that I've been pretty consistent in saying, in speaking about marijuana ordinance in general. Especially as far as the setbacks that we're gonna make, I I've said very consistently, I do not want to change any of the setbacks. And quite frankly, if I'm gonna toe that line, I should probably toe the line of. I don't necessarily think we should change the tax either, right? This is what the voters voted for.
Well, they voted that we could change.
They did, they did, they did, and so again, yeah, I'm I'm totally open to hearing the finance committee's recommendations as far as that goes, but. I do wanna make sure that I'm being consistent as far as.
The tax, the tax, the rate of tax is not something the finance committee comes up with. The type of investment bond or how they do it, that is what they come up with, bring to us, am I? Correct in that?
Well, I I think it might be good to hear from them a recommendation on the the sales, on the. Whether it's three, four, four point five, and provide some sort of. Um, something to support it and now.
Of what they can look into, and I told them all that we were talking about this tonight, so I'm gonna send them, once the video's out, public, here's the part. So that they know to be paying attention, so if it, if we choose to send it to them, that they're ready to look at it. But for example, like, one of the things that we looked at with some other things that they've gone through is what are different towns that have this doing? So for example, Berthas has their sales tax at seven percent. For marijuana, so it's something that they can look at, okay, what are sales taxes in Port Colombe, what are sales taxes in Berthas? Um, Lyons is another town that also has a marijuana, and they can look at what are some different, and then basically can give back to us as a board. Hey, you know, we've looked at all these different towns and here's some ideas of what we think might be good, and then we can take that information and then we decide, okay, thanks for this. Thanks for what you brought us, but we think it should be this.
Okay.
Um, but. So the guidance you're looking for is whether we should put it in a separate fund. And then we can give it to the finance committee with that. And looking at different tax rates and then bringing it back to us with options.
And what I can do is I can take it to the finance committee, we can have them analyze comparable local data for their tax rates. And we can also strategize the threshold of. How much do we wanna have this fund have at a minimum before we venture towards the next step? And just kind of do a financial development plan for these funds.
Yes.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. Thanks, you guys.
On to block cameras, L C S O.
So I don't know if it's easier for you to do a scroll through or. Or I can have myself as a viewer too and move this way.
Whatever you would prefer.
The price of gas.
Oh, thank you guys. Okay.
Let's see if this works.
Alright, so as you guys know, my name is Zach Anderson, what's called the community impact deputy. Um, for the town of Berthas, I've been assigned there since twenty nineteen, and I'm also one of the like stakeholders, if you will. Um, there was approached by the town and some of our like quality and life plans that we had in Berthas with it growing, so. Um, things from home burglaries, construction theft, vehicle theft, uh, vehicle break-ins, vehicle trespasses, whatever you wanna call it. Um, all that kinda stuff, um, and they asked for different tools or what we can do to actually solve some of these cases. Um, as property crimes are are kinda tough for us to solve them unless you get a lead off of it, so. This is one of the companies that uh I reached out to, uh, they wound up partner with us, and then we'll kinda get into. Um, what they're doing, um, so it's called Flock Safety, um, they have their own website with a whole bunch of stuff too, but I'm gonna try and. Cover the encompass of it, my understanding is you guys have had some conversations over this, okay. Uh, I'll kinda breeze through it, if you guys have questions at the end, please, by all means, that's what this is for, is to have that question answered and provide as much as I can. Um, so they're a licensed plate reader company, they're a little bit different than other ones, as they sell to private entities as well, so neighborhood HOAs. Um, private businesses like Walmart, um, anything like that can buy these cameras as well, their access is a little bit different than ours. And we'll kinda talk what that is, um, so they started in twenty seventeen, they have roughly around two thousand law enforcement partners. Um, and Colorado was kind of a guinea pig for them to start reaching out west. Um, where they're at, Colorado, California, and then they capture about one billion vehicles per month. Um, through it, so they're currently in forty two states, about fifteen hundred cities nationwide, and they average about a hundred. And twenty hot tag per alerts per hour, which basically just means that something passing it that's hitting the system. So a stolen car, an amber alert, an attempt to locate on a car if it was used in like a hit run. Or like the owner has an associated like felony or misdemeanor warrant, that kinda stuff is what a hot tag alert means. Um, so our demo that we're currently going on is gonna be in total fifty four cameras countywide. Um, right now, there's roughly um about twenty ish or so of them up. Um, and there's three currently in Wellington, and we'll kinda get into those as well. And so the cost is about twenty five hundred bucks per camera per year, that pays for uh twenty four seven tech service on it. So if it gets hit by a car or something like that, they'll come out, replace the camera, pays for the software that deputies use to access this. And then it pays for um the storage in the cloud database that this company all owns. So that basically just means that the towns that are paying for these, neighborhoods that are paying for these, the agency itself, we don't have to buy. Servers to store all this data in when it comes to evidence and stuff like that. Um, first cameras were just installed in Berthas, cause that's kinda where it started, and then it grew from there. Um, for where they're at, and we have currently about four of them down in Berthas that are located in two of our hotspot neighborhoods, if you will. To see how that progresses, cause the the citizens ask like, hey, our neighborhood is like number one for crime, like we can see on the blotter. Can we get these here and see what these can do um for that side of them? So the current ones in Wellington are Sixth Street in Cleveland northbound, Sixth Street in Cleveland southbound, and then Sixth Street in Washington southbound. Um, so there are some unique limitations to this company, and so obviously it's a computer, it it can misread stuff. Um, plates and stuff like that can get screwed up with weather, all sorts of stuff, right? No different than a deputy sitting there looking at it, they could think uh B, a letter V is an eight and run it wrong, this camera's the same thing. Um, for that side of it, there's some limitations that kinda came with the Wellington ones as far as like your guys' unique ingress and ingress in your town. Uh, by similar to Berthas, there's a lot of major thoroughfares, they're C dot controlled. So obviously C dot has a longer permitting process, then we're just waiting to see where that goes and obviously get those through. Um, some of the things we ran into too is just uh C dot obviously denied them being on the traffic lights. Um, which kinda added in unique stuff for your guys' jurisdiction is that obviously limited to what these cameras can capture. Um, but we're hoping with some of the successes I talk about in the early onset of these, that I can give you guys the most information that you can get, yeah.
Do you have any, was there a specific reason why C dot declined to allow them on the traffic signals, or is that consistent everywhere that they don't allow that?
It's pretty consistent everywhere, uh, block is still working as far as like their sales team. Um, because their poles and everything are now C dot crash test rated, and the Colorado State Patrol, obviously with Colorado being number one in auto theft. Is like, we want these, how do we get these through? We're not drilling holes in your pole, we're not doing, like, it basically just attaches with your ratchet strap on there, and then it's a solar and cellular. Um, to connect it, so we're not tapping anything, so that could change. As it goes in, C dot just routinely denies a lot of that stuff when it goes to their fixtures, it's just kinda like. Historically standard, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so it brought some unique challenges just due to where they're at, obviously we wanted to try and get as much vehicle traffic. Coming off of the interstate into those gas stations, and obviously there were just unique challenges when it comes to. Power lines and stuff like that that we're still working through, so some of the cameras aren't getting. What we necessarily wanted, but that's just due to other circumstances of they didn't wanna hit other utilities and cause you guys a bunch of issues. And a whole wide range of stuff, um, but hopefully we can uh talk through that and we can go forward. Um, with those, so um, public transparency is super big with this company. Um, so there are reads in the database, i.e. photos of a vehicle, the license plate number are only stored in that cloud database for thirty days. Once they're past that thirty day expiration, those plates are wiped from the system and no longer could get access to anymore by anyone. By flock, by law enforcement, that obviously changes it if we have a criminal case, or we arrest. A driver out of a stolen car off of it, we can download it, and then that goes automatically into our evidence system, and that's retained by us. For different set amounts when it comes to court processes, whether it's a misdemeanor, a felony, a traffic offense, that kinda stuff. So that thirty days can get extended, but it's stored in an actual evidence system with us. Uh, this company also makes license plate, the only read the rear of the car, so basically what that means is can't be used for facial recognition. So that was one of this big uh part of this company, is a civilian started it from a neighborhood that was crime ridden down in Texas. Wanted to get uh as much info as they can, i.e. getting a plate to law enforcement to help solve crime. It didn't want it being used to target specific drivers used for illegal use, right? Just eliminates that whole side of it when it focuses on the rear of the car. Um, deputies also receive trading in the system, case law, and then other criminal state law, that kinda stuff. Before they're given access to the system, and then it's monitored by like supervisors, internal affairs, and then a group of us that are. Kinda on the onboarding process, uh, which is almost like every division, so there's a person in patrol, which is myself. Up in our investigations, which is like our detective bureau, um, and our computer services, and there's a guy that runs the state database that I'll talk about, that basically. That what we pull everything from, if we're running names in um our computers or running a plate and it's coming back saying it's stolen, that this guy. That this guy basically maintains that system for the agency. So he's what's called a security officer and he also has the ability to monitor that as well. Uh to be able to go in and search in it, obviously deputies can get alerts. Um as soon as a car drives by it and the system knows that it's stolen because it's comparing it to um CCIC, which are our crime information center. And NCIC, which is the National Crime Information Center. So it's comparing that license plate to that database to be like, do we have a match? Is one, two, three, A, B, C, just pass this camera, oh, that's stolen. We're going to automatically alert the deputy by popping up on the screen with a photo of the plate, photo of the car and the location of the camera that it hit off of. So deputies can go interdict that, try and get that back, arrest that person or warrant, um get that uh kid back out of amber alert, things like that. Um to be able to search it for like uh any reason, deputies can go back and then search anything. Obviously, within that thirty-day timeframe when it comes to a criminal investigation, but they have to provide a case number and an incident number. That's auditable by the public, that's auditable by this company and what deputies are searching for. And that's monitored by our agency as well through numerous people in every division and then our internal affairs has access to it. To be able to look at that is obviously a free text field, so you technically could type anything into there for the search reason. That's just because every agency has different case number formats and they don't want unlimited to if they're trying to make it as user friendly. But if someone's putting in their like suspicious car, our internal affairs is going to see that or a sergeant's going to see it or a deputy's going to see it. It's monitoring it and be like, nope, this isn't okay. That's not enough. We need things that can actually track back. Where if the public asks like, hey, this plate was ran in the criminal case, why was it run? We can go back and actually look at a case number or an incident and be like, this is exactly why, not like, hey, it just says suspicious car. I don't know what to tell you. I'm just trying to um give that public transparency to them. Uh these are the current stats uh agency-wide and then I'll get a little bit into the Wellington ones. So the Berthardt ones came in late November, like the last week of November, uh we had two of them in the ground. Uh so far, we've had six felony warrant arrests, twenty misdemeanor arrests, uh seven stolen vehicles totaling a hundred thousand plus. Um in numerical value, uh monetary value of those and three stolen plate recoveries. And this is countywide through all the cameras that are currently in the ground. Uh Wellington right here, this is the only slide that's just different in your guys' packet because I want to make sure I got the data. So this is from March sixth to April eighteenth. Um had one misdemeanor warrant arrest, one stolen vehicle recovery. One that deputies went to interdict and just couldn't locate. So that means it either turned on Cleveland, went down the interstate, jumped on a different road. That no one was at, something like that. And then it was assisted in identifying a suspect vehicle from a burglary. Which I'll talk about here in a little bit on how that progressed in your guys' town. And then actually, right when we started this meeting, um a deputy was also going out to an alert off the camera in Wellington for another stolen car that rolled through. Um and trying to locate that, so. Um that's another one on there. These are the Berthardt ones, just to give you guys a timeframe of um how they've been here in Wellington and the kind of the extended one in Berthardt, if that makes sense. Um just so you can kind of see uh how long these go in. So Berthardt's averaging um right now four felony warrant arrests, eight misdemeanors. Five stolen vehicle recoveries in total and then two stolen plate recoveries. That's from November twenty twenty-three uh to about March first roughly. Um twenty twenty-three. Uh we'll kind of get into some of the cases, right? Because that's kind of what drives these things and I think that's a a good opportunity to kind of share the successes that we've had so far with these. As we kind of go along. So in December uh twenty twenty-two, a twenty-eight-year-old male was um arrested in a stolen vehicle. That led deputies on a a pursuit which was safely ended near the Love's Travel Travel Center, which is out near I twenty-five. And then charges included, obviously the pursuit. Um that male had two warrants, a rogue driver's license. Uh which was a habitual traffic offender, which is the highest license restraint you can have in the state. And then he was DUI um on drugs as well. Um so that was one of the first cases we had on that. Uh in February twenty twenty-two, uh two twenty-nine-year-old males, one eighteen-year-old female were contacted in a stolen vehicle in Johnstown. They also have these cameras and they're trialing them to see how they work for them as well. Um and it was involved in a shoplifting case out of the Shields um sports goods store, whatever you want to call it. Um so those charges included, obviously, the stolen vehicle, they had drugs with them. Uh one of the parties was uh unlawfully carrying a concealed weapon, uh different theft. And then one of the subjects had five warrants for their arrest as well. Uh this to share you, so uh that this demo includes the sheriff's office, but the other city jurisdictions are also part of this demo. They're just allowing the sheriff's office to take control of this, to be able to not have multiple demos running at once, just makes it easier on the company. So Fort Collins, Loveland, Windsor, anyone in our jurisdiction has access to this system through MOUs and they follow the same. Um stuff in in their agency policies. So uh Fort Collins used it in February. They took a vehicle theft and within a couple of minutes of taking that theft, jump on um this system, which is just a web base. And we're able to see that the vehicle traveled to Orange County, Florida. They called Orange County, Florida, like, hey, our car traveled and just passed one of your flock cameras. It's entered, but there's a time delay and obviously the system downloading from the state and national system. So they called and said, hey, this just passed. Uh here's a copy of the vehicle entry, can you guys go find this? And they were able to go find it and recover it and arrest a suspect, which obviously recovered that car way faster. Before, without these, you may not have known that that car actually traveled to Florida and it could be months down the road. Um the average vehicle recovery right now in Colorado is looking at about six months roughly to recover your car from date of stolen. To actually recovering it and some of those are years out too as well. Um so some more cases uh in Berthardt. Uh they used it to ID suspects um of a vehicle theft and a trailer theft. Um that was basically a camper that was stolen. Deputies used it to basically track the suspect vehicles that came into town. Used uh other stuff like surveillance video to confirm like, yep, I think that's the truck. Now we have a license plate and now we identified a suspect. Whereas before, all they had is just a side profile of a white Ford F two fifty, which is super generic. And that would have been hard to to find and they actually tracked that guy down into the metro area. He just came up here to specifically do that and then steal that back. Um it's been, this has to be updated. It's been now used to assist two different agencies and three homicides now. One in Loveland, which was the one um that recently happened um at their apartment complex. Uh it was used to help with that. And then uh two in Greeley as well. Um for that side of it. Um in April, so pretty recently, this is a super big success. In the neighborhood where we have one of these cameras, one of the neighborhoods, we had a drive-by shooting that occurred. Uh deputies within twenty minutes were able to identify a suspect vehicle by using Ring video footage during a canvas. And had a license plate. Within two hours, a suspect was identified that did that drive-by shooting. And interviewed by our investigators and then taken into custody. Obviously, things happened after that to identify more of it. Now all of um them are charged. Um in there and they're all unfortunately juveniles, but without that, um even the victims are like, I don't think there's a way we would identified it. So why generic Ram truck? Um but this license plate caught it coming in right before the time of it and then just using Ring. Uh video footage or surveillance video in the neighborhoods to confirm that that was the car that we were looking for. Um also in April, we used it to identify um a home burglary suspect. So in the golf course, uh we were actually just talking about golf courts, but in that neighborhood. Um someone came in there, kicked in a door to a multi-million dollar home and stole about ten thousand dollars with the construction tools. Fortunately, that guy had trackers on his tools, which is smart because it's happened to him before. Uh called us, said, hey, they're tracking in the metro area. We were able to get a plate for him um and a photo of the truck and then sent that down. Um to our agencies down there to identify a suspect and then they were able to to help us out and identify that. So that case is still progressing. Um and there'll hopefully be a warrant here soon for that suspect um for those crimes. Uh right at the institution, it was used to, um I don't know if you guys remember, but the amber alert that came out of the metro area and like late December. Um Flock didn't catch that uh amber alert vehicle, but it was used to help the Loveland Police Department because it hit off of one of their license plate readers. And they're like, hey, we lost it. Did it go into Berthardt? The deputies were able to access the system, dump that plate into the system and be like, nope, it didn't come to Berthardt. So they were able to be like, alright, we lost it in this geographical area, flood this area with cops from every agency. And they were able to find that car, arrest that suspect and get that, um she's thirteen, get that thirteen-year-old girl back. Um in April, we used it in uh off of one of our Fort Collins cameras that hit um out in uh our District Two area, which is like Lepore. Um that side to locate uh another amber alert. So it's a three-year-old girl that was taken by her father who wasn't allowed to have custody from her due to. Um child custody stuff, um that was trying to hook you out of state into Wyoming and deputies were able to locate that car off of it. By Pueblo calling us and saying, hey, we think this car's heading up the interstate. Deputy jumped on here, dumped the plate into the system and is like, oh, there it is. And we went and found that and they were able to get that um three-year-old um girl back and then the the father into custody for obviously the charges that taken her. Um against that side of it and kidnapping and stuff like that. Uh the Wellington, the one I touched on was able to use a uh identify a suspect vehicle from a store burglar here in town. Um it didn't catch the temp tag just due to the lighting conditions. The cameras are susceptible to everything, right? Like the naked eye with snow or lighting conditions, I could think the plate's different than when I thought. This camera is the same way. Though it didn't catch it, deputies were able to download that photo and send it out to the guys working here in your community. And a deputy that uh was good at doing his job was able to pull that photo up and be like, hey, I think this is the car sitting here over up the side street. Couple of days later, pulled that photo up and is like, yep, it has a unique license plate bracket, the stickers in a certain spot. Waited for cover, identified that vehicle, which identified a suspect when they contacted a minute and that progressed that case along. Um I don't know the status of it just because it's still active, um but that uh male was looking at uh being the primary suspect of that burglary that happened here in town. Um reviewing video footage too from that case, um just before I came here. Um the car parked uh right off of Sixth Street and then walked into the business, did the burglar and walked back. So even their security cameras just see a guy walking up that's wearing a face mask, you don't really catch anything. So this plate reader was very helpful in actually catching a photo of that car. The deputies could start looking at that even though it didn't actually catch the plate. And they tried a bunch of different combinations of that temp tag and it just didn't make out, but enough was there for them to be able to to contact this stuff. Uh again, used in Berthardt um to contact a stolen vehicle. That suspect was uh involved in a motor vehicle theft ring, was operating in Laramie County, Well County, so Greeley. And then all over in the metro area where there's about fifty um different suspects tied to that one ring for it. Um so that helped identify him. Um deputies were involved in a pursuit in that and let that go just for public safety due to daytime hours. But having that photo passing it to investigators and then to the auto theft task force, they were able to use that to kind of track where that car was and who this guy was. As they came in. And then uh most recently, I'm sure you guys saw, but the senior alert that we did a couple of weeks ago out of Berthardt where we had a ninety-three-year-old man. Um that went missing. I was the primary deputy that took that case. As soon as the wife called in and I talked to her, I was like, what's going on? And she's like, my husband has early onset dementia. He's supposed to be home at one-ten, it's now three-thirty. Uh I confirmed with the friend that he left the Loveland Library and I don't know where he went. I jumped out the system right away, plugged his plate in, saw he entered Berthardt, but still didn't make it home. And then we used this company to track the other agencies that have this, basically track his car around the state. So uh we tracked him down to Lyons who has these cameras, down to Jepco. Uh and then obviously, there's not a ton of this company yet around there. He bounced around gas stations that ended up in Winter Park is where he finally got located when he crashed his car. Yeah, exactly. Uh but it was pretty vital just to uh tell the wife that, hey, he was southbound on Berthardt Parkway. I know you already told me his route. Is this different than him? She's like, yeah, there's no way he'd be taking that route. That's way off, way off character for him. I don't know what he's doing. And that uh helped us at least identify, but then also get a photo of the car and send out to other agencies. And be like, hey, look for this, using our press release to give to citizens, this is the actual car instead of just, here's the stock sus, the stock vehicle photo of it, right? We actually showed it, add stickers on it, things like that, that even lay citizens can look at and go, oh, I think that's that dude in Colin, um as it kind of goes in. So let's see if this goes through. So this is a dashboard that we kind of created that'll give you guys a kind of idea of it. So right now, these are kind of where all the cameras are at, so obviously.
Going that screen right now. That's, we might need to unchair and then chair the other screen.
There we go. So this right here is just showing where the cameras are at. That's what this green blob is. So these ones right here are the ones in Johnstown that they're testing over on the Laramie side, obviously a bunch in Berthardt. A couple in Timneth, um some out here in our uh district in uh East Fort Collins, up in the port. And then your guys' one up here in Wellington and then one up here in Livermore. Um but basically, this kind of gives you an idea. So in total, from the start of this program to now. Um we've averaged about two thousand, a little over two thousand hits off of it. And basically, this kind of shows you a graph of what it's hitting off of. So roughly a little under fifty percent is stolen plates. Uh misdemeanor warrants is the next biggest one. Attempt to locate, which just basically means the agency enters that plate in that we're looking for it for a burglary homicide. Yeah, whatever it is, hit and run, um stolen vehicle and then felony warrants and some other things as it goes in. So that kind of just gives you an idea. Kind of give you guys an idea. Um these ones right here, obviously, the ones in Berthardt are very high-traffic roads. So Berthardt Parkway, northbound and southbound, they're not on two eighty-seven just because we're waiting for that um approval through C dot. But those obviously are hitting a lot um off of it. We're getting a ton of success is just that traffic volume as it goes through. And then uh the ones in Timneth are also progressing as it goes through. But that kind of just gives you an idea and those numbers right there, how many hot hits it's getting on that plate. So uh this Berthard camera has about two hundred and thirty-one of them so far from the start of this trial till now of it. Basically hitting on something, whether it's stolen plates, um warrants, stolen vehicles, that kind of stuff. And uh this is still changing, but hopefully the idea of this is to have a dashboard that you guys could have access to and then you get real-time updates of how this. Uh program is progressing um as it goes in. It's still just in the works, so I just wanted to make sure that you guys um specifically saw that. Um so Castle Rock was the guinea pig and I don't think I'd be giving you guys the whole um. Experience of this company without talking about some of their successes. So they were the first agency that partnered with this company. They have about thirty-eight cameras right now and the next jurisdictions that are closest to us is the city of Boulder has about forty of them. And then the little tiny towns around it, so like Erie, Lafayette, um that kind of side. Johnstown and us are the next closest up here that are running demos for this. Um as we kind of go along. So it's kind of hard to see in this, but I'll kind of give you ideas. So they basically got a hit on a stolen truck that was coming through. They chose to follow it, wait for it to pull into um a Sonic right here. And then interdict that car where it had an opportunity that it couldn't run. It was stuck in a spot. They could park behind it. And we didn't get into pursuit where we're endangering citizens or anything like that. So uh that's primarily what deputies are taught as well with us is not be the dog chasing the rabbit, right? To try and keep eyes on it and get it in the bed down in a parking lot or where we can interdict this safely. Or hopefully have a deputy get in front of it with spike strips that if it does run, it's just immediately stopped or immediately deflate the tires where those speeds go down. Um in those pursuits and we can take other action and we're not doing like a hundred, hundred and thirty down a roadway, um endangering people as we go on. Uh but this stopped the occupants in the vehicle in total had about twenty-seven warrants for their arrest. That's twenty-seven cases that got processed in the court case. This right here is pretty recent. Um Castle Rock was emailing me about this. But it's about ten pounds of methamphetamine that they located out of the car and their goal is just to tell their public that, yep, we have these. But it's also not used to locate stolen cars. This is also uh getting us on like a traffic warrant that maybe is attached to a plate. Now we're pulling things like guns, high uh valued dollar drugs out of the car, that kind of stuff to keep the community safe that way. Whereas before, uh unless you had a deputy sitting there running every plate on the uh corner, you're not going to have it. That camera's basically just sitting there running plates as much as it can um as it passes by. Um and these are some of the um obviously uh fruits of those traffic stops that they're getting off of it. Um and they've had great success um with their stolen vehicle. Johnstown so far has averaged about twelve stolen vehicle recoveries in the three months that they've had their cameras. Um so they're kind of progressing. This was another case that they shared with me that obviously had a couple um sawed-off shotgun. Um some of the handguns that were with the felon and then uh these right here are all fentanyl pills that are disguised as a mixie. Oh, and this is when it comes along. So obviously produces some good results that we don't want the stuff floating in the community. But it's also there, the deputies could just ignore it and then when it starts seeing it in their face, they, hey, this stolen car just drove by. Now we can get alerted to it instead of deputies doing the old way, which is trying to pick it up proactively, which we're good at. But obviously, we can't be everywhere at once. So obviously, I kind of want to end it with question, answers. Um I'm here to answer whatever questions you guys have um about this uh program here. Obviously, the the Wellington stats, um when you look at them, aren't as successful, if you will, as some of the other areas. And I think that's just due to the timeframe. So even when we started in Berthardt, we maybe got a couple here and there. But it's like traffic increased, weather got nicer, more people were out driving around, that kind of extends for that side of it. We're starting to see the success over it. Um and obviously, the success using it in criminal investigation. Um, and obviously the success using it in criminal investigations. Where we need to try and identify a plate of a suspect car or things like that as we come and go along. Um, so I'm here to answer whatever questions that you guys have on these, um, just to give you guys a better idea.
I do. So when you go into a community and you kind of. Look around and look at where cameras are needed. Do you guys have like a guesstimate number for the each community? That you go into on what, how many you want to see set up in that community to be most beneficial and assistive?
Yep. So the goal when these basically got started is especially in uh the two towns that we police, which is Berthoud and Wellington. Is to try and get major ingress and egress roads. Berthoud wanted a little bit more just because they wanted to see if those neighborhoods would buy these cameras because they came to us specifically. When they heard about it and expressed interest. So this company is like, yep, we'll give you as many cameras as you want for this demo. Um, and the demo is sixty days. That clock has not started yet because at the beginning, and I'll give this to this company right now, they're losing money on us. Because they're eating the cost of these cameras every day that they're in the ground, uh even over a year. Um, and obviously we'll approach that pretty close. Uh, but they said, hey, these cameras will start the sixty-day clock once all fifty-four of them are in the ground. We're still waiting on twenty-six of them to go on the ground. So obviously we're getting these for a lot longer period. Which benefits us and it benefits the citizens of our community to use these, but that company also shows. Their drive to be able to solve crime in communities by saying, hey, we promised you this, we're gonna go. But yes, we looked at basically hot zone areas um in the towns in the jurisdiction of where can these cameras be best? Um, in the city of Old Collins Loveland, they were running different ALPR or license plate reader systems. That we basically looked at where are those at and where can we put these to maybe complement those or give them a better idea? So that's kind of the general idea of it. Um, that's kind of where they went is just looking at hot zone areas and trying to get. The biggest flow of traffic as it came through. Um, so most of the ones that wanted to that we're waiting for are like highway one, right off the interstate, that kind of stuff to catch all that. Which are like C dot controlled roadways and that's kind of where um those are not in yet is it's just waiting that permitting process. As we kind of go along for that.
Would you say this is like having an additional officer by your side when you're not available? But I don't, I don't mean to negate like computer compared to our officers that serve, but kind of looking at it as. Twenty-five hundred dollars per camera or seventy-six thousand dollars per. Like deputy that comes into the community. So that's. Kind of one of those things that you see such such a cost benefit. Not just on a budget side for as far as the town goes, but also in the community side. Because I mean, the drugs and items that you showed here just. That's one less pill that's sitting on our street right now. I guess is probably the best way that I look at that.
For sure. These license plate readers are basically like having a cop park at the intersection and sit in there and running every license plate that passes them. Which obviously isn't possible because we're going to look there and look at it, but this computer can start looking at it and going through. Um, the other opportunity that this camera has is something that deputies don't is that it has AI technology in it. So artificial intelligence that they teach it what new cars look like. So what is the new Chevy Silverado look like? Where do they put that logo? Where's that license plate? What do out-of-state license plates look like? What does a temp tag in Colorado look like to a temp tag in Wyoming? They're constantly teaching the computer. How to learn what that looks like, which gives deputies the ability to go in the system. Even if they take their plates off their car to be like, we're looking for a white Chevy sedan. And we are like, oh, we got it on video footage. There's a sticker on the back. Deputies have the ability through the system. To input things like window stickers, top rack, back rack, stuff that they teach. This camera what to look for, that they can go back and run it. To plate readers nationwide through this company. So all over the United States that hopefully they drove by. A camera at one point, not doing their criminal episode and they actually have their license plate on there and they're able to go back and track it. So there's a lot of like on the backend success to it, but also that success that you brought up of. The, it's basically like a deputy except cheaper um sitting in there. To give you guys an idea, old legacy. Um, ALPRs, which is what the industry refers to other ones that work a little bit different than this company's. Take photos of everything, whether it's coming straight on like a front-facing photo, rear-facing photo, and it's a majority off infrared. Um, and it just goes off license plate info. So it can't tell that that license plate is on the Chevy sedan. But that plate actually goes to Jeep and it's just going to say, nope, the Chevy sedan's a Jeep because it's pulling that plate information from the DMV. This company uses the plate secondary to what it teaches the computer to look like. And those ones cost roughly Loveland just paid for theirs. It's a little under thirty thousand just for the camera unit. That is only, at least in my experience, good as far as maintenance for about three years. And then you're hit or miss whether they say, yep, we have parts to replace it or nope, you gotta buy our new stuff now. Where this company paying the subscription fee, if you will, every year. Looks cost-effective, but like what you get out of it seems to be. Better as far as like the birth of right now, one camera has given us issues. We called him up because it had a red tint to it. The tech came out the next day, swapped that camera, put it in there, but it didn't cost us anything. Even if we were paying for it, that's part of that twenty-five hundred dollar cost that kind of goes into it.
Awesome. I like it because it kind of protects people's privacy as well.
For sure.
You said those ones that Loveland installed will take pictures all over.
Yep.
Where the block one only takes the picture of the car or the reverse of that license plate on the rear end.
And that was a goal, obviously, when looking at like what companies to go to, a grand different license plate reader companies. And then looking at this one, it had some more advantages that were more community oriented than other ones that they sell to public entities if they want to. If Walmart wants to pay for this camera to help with their shoplifting, that gives Walmart more incentive. To help us by helping themselves, right? But then we get access to that camera. If they're like, yes, we want to share with the sheriff's office or our local police department. And they get alerts no different. So that it's kind of a win-win for them, but other companies don't do that where they sell to private entities. And they certainly don't have the privacy side of it because the sheriff's office has no interest. In tracking citizens' movements. The only interest that we have is public safety, right? As we come into this and this company seems to blend those lines to where we felt comfortable. Being like, can we try this demo? Is this going to be successful for citizens in our community and the end goal of our goal, which is providing public safety?
Awesome. An interesting point that you brought up that is a cool byproduct of this particular program is that it provides. Uh, traffic counts essentially. For us. So those, we, it'll help us be able to monitor maybe some of those traffic counts during like. Our events and things so that we don't have to have those benefit systems out there. A side note, no overreaching government always. This is a little bit of uncomfortable feeling. So I mean, I see both sides of it. Community perspective, I guess.
And this is AI. Even media, real time, correct?
Correct, yes.
So if you got somebody coming across. Into our parking lot over here and they're wanting for drugs, it's going to be automatically sent to the local police department.
Yep, there's a little bit of delay just because it's got to check the system and then dump it out. So it's about twenty to thirty seconds. But you're getting that alert about a little second on the long end. Seeing the shorter end of that, if that's entered in there where deputies are automatically getting a photo of it. But then they have to take certain steps. We're not just going to light that car up or start pointing guns because the camera says it's stolen. We obviously got to look at it and compare, does this relate? And after that entry. Uh, did someone not call in that their stolen plates got recovered, things like that, that obviously you've seen in the news, right? Um, metro air agencies and example uh recently that uh hot stopped the car that that ALPR actually said, yep, that's a stolen car. But it was saying that that was a different state plate. It was for a motorcycle and they stopped. A family that's in the SUV. So deputies are trained how to like, obviously prevent that, which is that we need to verify. It's no different than someone saying. Hey, my neighbor Johnny killed his wife Suzie.
Mm-hmm.
We're not going to go straight arrest him, right? We're going to verify that information and these license plate readers are the most. The same thing is that we're going to start taking steps to verify that that is correct. Visually confirming it and running it again ourselves to be like, does this match before we start taking enforcement action on it?
So I think like I appreciate that seeing results is good to see that. I do share some of the concerns with privacy. I mean, this is constantly the thing that we go through, right? We give up this amount of privacy at the airport because of certain things that happen. Um, my understanding, and so I want to preface that my concerns are not with what it sounds like a company now and how LCSO is going to use it. Like I, I appreciate how you guys are using it. The concern is that if we have other entities that choose to use it in different ways in future, can that cause problems that we have to take into account? Because it's like you can, my understanding is there are different lists that can be entered that you get alerts based on certain lists that are in there. So for felony warrants, there's one list for misdemeanor warrants. There's another list for stolen vehicles. There's another list. Do we get to some point in the future? Again, doesn't sound like it happened with this company or LCSO is going to do this, but you get to like, oh. These are political miscreants. There's now this list and I just want to be careful. But again, the entities working with now, I think it's not a, not a problem, but. I think it's a question we've got to look at seriously. Like again, it's. We're saying we as government, yes, we're not capturing bases and things like that, but we are still. That information saver and we're tracking is, are we making sure that it's being used responsibly?
I think that's where you get that the company can obviously audit it and then we have the ability to audit it. So anytime deputy makes a custom list, if they're looking for a burglary suspect. And it's maybe not in that system, but they want to know if that car passes a camera again. But that list is automatically, as soon as they enter it, they have to enter a case number. They can't just enter it um and. Several people of several different chains have access that as soon as that goes in, we're seeing that list on there to be like. Why is this deputy creating that? And then we have the ability to be like, that doesn't look okay, delete. As admins and that list goes away and then we go have a conversation like what's going on here for that side of it. So a lot of it's obviously internal trust, which I think the sheriff's office has. Uh, built the reputation to do that, but we also want that citizen buyback and the buyback from you guys to hold that accountable, right? Um, some agencies, right? Don't fight for the job of their law enforcement policing their areas where the sheriff's office is unique, right? Every day the deputy is in a contract town and we tell our guys in Berthoud that the same thing is this is that we're competing for. Uh, our business, right? Where basically if you guys don't like it, you can be like, nope, we're starting our own. Uh. We don't like how you guys do business. Every day deputies are fighting to keep that business through it. Um, so I think that accountability goes both ways and we welcome that um for that side of it. That's why we want to come to these meetings and offer input uh to anyone that wants. Um, at the end of it, we'll go to the county commissioners as well and kind of talk about successes, that kind of stuff. Um, as we kind of go along and it's not a secret that we're doing this. We're more than happy to. Answer questions to citizens or anything like that. So I welcome any feedback that you guys have and. Thank you for the, the questions because that accountability back to us is what kind of makes the, the community a whole, right? Wouldn't have the police department or sheriff's department or any law enforcement without actually having community buy-in and trust. Um, if that gets broken down, then what are we doing here, right? Uh, we're not going to be successful in, in our end goal for that side of it.
I will say you have a lot of sass. If you're looking at this as a customer business relationship, you have. Many, many customers that are very satisfied with the service LCSO provides here in our community. I hear it on a very regular basis.
I'm glad.
Yeah, excellent presentation, deputy. Really appreciate you. Lots of successes here and I'm very good stuff, so.
Yeah, thanks. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At some point, if we have a discussion about the committee and that deputy again and future law enforcement, can we have him here for that? I'd like you, I'm not saying we're going to steal him from Berthoud, but I think you could really. I approve. Don't tell the Berthoud mayor. No, but I, I would love to have, if you were able to get you back out here when we had that conversation, because I mean. This hearing that you're kind of running a lot of this, I'd love to kind of hear what that looks like is. That's one of the things we're exploring is do we put in place a similar position here in Wellington?
Yeah, I'm more than happy to come back on whatever issue it is. If you guys want Berthoud specific stuff to help make decisions on. Whatever you guys have. I know the town staff down there is more than happy. We've traveled to other towns to provide our input of what we're doing. That they're more than happy on administrative side, whether it's policy or anything like that to share. And we're more than happy on our side of it to come in and offer anything that we can um and give you guys input as you're looking to, to progress. Um, those options and progress as a community.
All right. Next item is going to be the monthly utility report. Mr. Givell.
Just sending the analyst, so he should be popping up here in a second. How are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's been a while since I uh fussed around with these settings, so bear with me just a second.
That's funny how something that was a norm that you just, when you don't use it after a while, I like, how do I make my camera come on?
Well, we tend to use teams more than um.
It's different.
Yeah. So I am trying to share my screen here.
We can see your screen.
What do you see the, the gender item, the utility report?
Yes.
It's like.
Could you make it bigger? Yeah.
Uh, I can make it. Does that help?
There it is. Yeah, it's full screen now.
Okay. Uh, so this is the. Monthly utility report that we've been uh providing since last summer. This was kind of an upgraded version of our previous reporting reports that we would, we would send in on a periodic basis. Um, thought we would. Kind of present it in this format to, to see if there's any questions out there. There's a lot of. Uh, technical information in here, so I'm going to run through this pretty fast. Please feel free to ask questions as we go or, or at the end, either way. Um, so the monthly utility report, it basically consists of three parts. There's a production and operational summary. Which is this page that we're looking at. And um, there's the production graphs, as we call them, that are actually on the back of the report. And in between are fairly detailed reports on the expansion projects themselves and the status of those reports. So um, I'll go through this one pretty quickly. A lot of this is um. Also located on the production graphs that are at the end and I, I think some of it might be a little bit easier to grasp in there. So we'll, we'll get to that here later on. But uh, for the water side. Our production was nineteen million gallons for the month, last month. And that's about average, maybe a little less than average for the last five years. Um, generally speaking, we present the last five years in our production graphs and she probably noticed. On the wastewater side, we're at about uh sixty-one percent of our maximum permitted hydraulic capacity. Our bugaboo or challenge out there has always been organic loading, organic um capacity. And we're currently at eighty percent, which is a fairly good number. We've been higher than that in past months. Um, so feeling pretty good so far this year, but things can change in a hurry as, as we know. The operational summary, kind of the bottom part of this report. Um, I think the highlights here that we, we spent some time at the water plant kind of tuning things up in anticipation of summer demand. So we've got the forty horsepower, which is our workhorse raw water pump. Um, up and running and that's ready to go. We needed to turn that off during the winter because of low demand. This is our highest capacity pump that we have at our pre-treat facility for raw water pumping. Uh, the nano filtration plant was taken down for really a range of. Operational and maintenance-related improvements. Those included things like replacement of a pump motor. Uh, we rebuilt our chemical dosing system. Um, and also kind of implemented some safety improvements in terms of containment and things like that. So. Um, the water plant crew spent some quality time out at the nano, making sure that um. That plant was, was up and running at top form for peak demand. Our micro filtration plant is still, we're still haven't turned that on and as y'all might recall. That particular process does nothing for taste and odor treatment and it's located out at reservoir three. So um, that's kind of our last case. It's our third option in terms of turning on uh production capacity. And uh, we haven't needed to use that. So we have it. When we, when we do, if we get into a situation, say in the summer. Where we've got to um turn on the micro. Then there will be a corresponding impacted taste and odor and we'll be sure and. And uh, get that information out to, to everybody as that's happening. Um, the water reclamation plant is. Cranking along and you'll see the primary update there, which is. It's, it's pretty common update for all the water wastewater staff. Uh, continue to coordinate with the expansion project contractor daily. And when I say daily, I really mean by minute by minute. There's so much stuff going on out there. Operators are. So much stuff going on out there. Operators are constantly working through the phasing issues and. Uh, access and storage issues just on a daily basis in addition. To uh, keeping their eye along with our project managers, Dave and Nathan. Um, on the projects. So the next. Section are the project status reports. The first one here is for the water treatment plant expansion and. Uh, we're still generally on track for the schedule. We have experienced a few weather days. Uh, it's our belief that we'll be able to make that up later on in the project, but we are tracking those weather days. Um, those are basically days that due to high winds or. Precipitation, whether it's snow, rain, um, just basically the contractor can't work on that day. And we've had a lot of wind out there. In this past year and that's been, that's a safety issue that we just, you know. It's just not safe to operate a crane or do some things in that kind of wind. Recently, we've. Started on the chemical building. We've got the slab complete and we're going vertical on that. So. If you drive by, you'll, you'll start to see some rebar uh, sticking up out of the the chemical plant building. Um, flipping over to the wastewater plant. Well, in terms of contingency, so we, we include this contingency update and. Just as a reminder, we had about three million dollars in total contingency on the water plant. Uh, we report the the changes in that month, but I did wanna kind of give you the overall status of the contingency. Between the owner and the contractor contingency, we're at eighty nine percent remaining. And we're, well, say roughly halfway through the project. So we're feeling pretty good about the contingency. It's important to note too, that uh, some of these months you'll see that. We have negative change orders, negative changes to the project that are. Basically a result of our continuing value engineering efforts, which are kind of. Well, foremost in the whole team's mind on an ongoing basis out there. So. Moving to the wastewater or wastewater reclamation, sorry. Um, status report, we're still on track from a scheduled point a few there. We've got a few weather delays that again, we hope to make up later. We are under construction with all the facilities out there. And uh, there's quite a few of them. There's more facilities out at the wastewater plant and by facilities, I mean. Um, areaation basins or buildings or generally all those big concrete structures that you see out there. So here's the list of all the. The facilities that are in process and kind of the monthly. Um, what's been, what's happened in the last month? In terms of contingency for the water reclamation plant. Um, again, there's some details there, but in the overall sense. Uh, the total combined contingency, we have about eighty percent remaining on that contingency. So feeling pretty good about that one. This project is a little bit further along. It's a bigger project. Um, they've just got more people out there working and it's a little bit further along than the water treatment plant. This last part are the production graphs, which we've been producing these for years. And uh, I hope that people are interested in them. They fascinate us, but uh, this purple is the. The total production for the month this year. There's the legend right there. And you can see our production is tracking along at a slightly below average rate. And that's a good thing. Um, obviously it's the summer months that are problematic for us in terms of meeting. Demand. Um, that twenty twenty, those twenty twenty bars just popped out as um. Uh, really almost kind of a. Just a different, a difference, uh, they're on a different level. There, but the rest, if you look at the rest of the bars, you can see that. In general, there's just been a very slight decrease in demand over the last five years excluding twenty twenty. Um, which I think we could attribute to a number of things, but uh, in general, that's, that's probably um. An example of effective water conservation. So. We're at fifty six million gallons total production for the first quarter. And uh, that's a hundred and seventy one acre feet. Uh, the rest of these charts on the water side are just detail. This is broken out by the, the two processes we have at the main plant site. These numbers are um, of some interest, but this one right here is for the nano plant. And you can see that it's been a little bit inconsistent, starting out the year. Um, because we have had to take it down. We've also had some. Oh, our selenium discharge issues at the wastewater plant. Uh, most of that comes from the nano plant. So uh, we've got testing going on there. And that's kind of complicated our, our production at Nano Plant as well. So here's the water reclamation charts. This is the total. Monthly volume of influence flow into the plant. And we had a, a high number in January and we have more like an average number of February and March. Um. These numbers tend to be a little bit more volatile than you would expect. Um. But that's what we get at the wastewater plant. Um, you can see it's a total of fifty five million gallons treated. And that equates to one hundred and sixty eight acre feet. Our primary. This is a chart about hydraulic loading and uh, some of you may recall that we have two primary criteria. One is hydraulic loading, which is just the amount of wastewater that comes into the plant. And um, we're, this chart kind of shows you over the years. How we've are um, performing against our limits. Our design uh, limits for the plant itself and really our permit limits. And you can see that we've, we've bumped, bumped it a few times and again, those were twenty twenty numbers and um. But this year we're tracking along pretty well. We're sixty one percent for the bunch, the month of March. Our uh, challenge out there is typically gonna be organic loading, which is just the amount of. Some people think of it as the strength of the wastewater stream. Uh, you could also just think of it as, as just the amount of organic material that we have to treat. In order to safely release it to the environment. And this is our limit, this dash line right here uh, over the years. And you can see that we're tracking along the cyan line at about eighty percent of our maximum organic loading. And that's the report. So if there's any questions or comments, um. We'd love to try and address those.
Like start off, I say Bobby, do great. It's a great report.
Well, I can admit I don't actually put this report together. I have to give credit to uh, to Nathan uh, Ewer and Dave Meyer on that one.
Did a heck of a job.
Yeah.
Um, anybody got questions, comments? Yeah, the report again, as Mayor said, was great. You actually answered one of my questions, which was where we at on the total contingency for water? Where are we at on the contingency with the sewer?
We're at about eighty percent for the sewer.
Eighty percent, okay.
Eighty percent remaining.
Eighty remaining, okay. Perfect. And I appreciate, I know I've. Beat this through the whole process and I appreciate you guys saving money on things as we go through the process. I sometimes wish the credits and the debits were flipped. And we were saving the bigger numbers and spending smaller ones, but I appreciate the work you guys are doing to keep on top of that. So good work. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Really good, fair, concise information. It doesn't answers all the questions. It's really, really good report. And I like that you can do the trends over time too. That's super helpful.
I know and this, this, this report, as you mentioned, does get put into your packet, but I wanted to make sure we drew attention to it. I felt like we're. At a good place at the um, construction of the facilities and things like that to just provide a good update and go through it. And we'll probably do this again in the fall.
Awesome. Thank you for putting that in.
Seth, thanks, Bob. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob.
Hey.
And thank you, Nathan.
Yeah, Nathan, Dave, I'll tell them.
He can, it's a, it's a team effort.
Yeah. It really is.
All in favor of any more research?
Cool, maybe night.